November 5th, 2014, meeting of the city councils called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable channel two and are closed captioned for hearing impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink may view this program in high definition on channel 1002 and some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming may be viewed on the internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV cable channel two on the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by state of the art fire detection and suppression, goodness gracious, and I didn't stay up late, and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chamber out to the mezzanine and proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and Verve Street. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for our invocation this morning given by Reverend Bonnie Polley, Christ Episcopal Church, and then remain standing for the pledge? Thank you.
Let us pray. Oh God, the fountain of wisdom, whose will is good and gracious and whose whole law is truth, we beseech you to guide and bless each member of our city council assembled here today. Give each of them the spirit of wisdom and understanding that they may discern the truth in all that they undertake. Show them your purpose in all that they undertake as they exercise their duties as leaders in our city. Teach us all to seek you first and fill our hearts with thankfulness as we strive to serve each other. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend, and we will now proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. What a wonderful audience we have here. All veterans. I know I'm talking very softly. I'm using my classroom voice, which is quiet to get children to be quiet. Oh, you look lovely. It is a nonpartisan office and we're all Americans and forward we move. Being a nonpartisan, that's the beauty of it all. Part of me is one and part of me is the other. Okay, and you brought a red folder. Are you going to come over and give it to these gentlemen to show them that this is part of the peace offering from the Democratic side to the Republican side? That's why Councilman Barlow, and he's wearing a red tie too. Goodness gracious. And these two guys are in green. What so much? Okay, we're going to start off this morning with our wonderful Councilwoman Tarkanian's going to present the Citizen of the Month for November.
Today, we're going to honor an organization that many of you have probably not heard about, but it's an organization that has individuals working every day in our industries and out of our industries. It's called Clean the World Foundation. It was founded only in February 2009, but in the intervening years, it's done many, many things to help individuals, not only here in Las Vegas, but also throughout the world. In Nevada, Clean the World has worked hard and diligently, persistently, to help people gain a level of hygiene that they perhaps might not otherwise be able to obtain. And so I'd like to ask Shay Hagan to please come up and join me. Shay, there she is. And Shay is representing for us today, the Clean the World Foundation, and it does a tremendous amount of good we don't hear about, as I said. It sounds simple, Clean the World, and it sounds simple what they do, but it takes a lot of work. And what they do is they go out and they collect from all of the companies and all of the casinos and restaurants and wherever, soap and shampoo products that are discarded by the hospitality industry every single day. And secondly, what they do is distribute these and other donated hygiene products to improve the lives of impoverished people, thus helping to prevent the millions of deaths that are caused throughout the world by hygiene-related illnesses. And I think those of us who live in our country don't often realize how many people die every single day through a hygiene-related illness. And they complete this mission by number one, collecting and processing discarded soap, shampoo, conditioner, lotion products, donations of any other kind of hygiene products, and number two, by delivering these recycled product donations to a factory in Florida, right? In Florida, that takes all of these and puts, takes any germs away and makes it so it's clean and hygienic for use. And then they take these from there and they use them to send to impoverished countries suffering from high death rates due to acute respiratory infection and diarrheal diseases. And they also use them some here within our own country. Since its inception, Clean the World has been steadily increasing its services and operations to accommodate the rapidly expanding community needs. We see that here and we see and we read about it for the countries that are other places than the United States. And awareness and donations has increased tremendously. They've collected in-kind donations since their inception of more than $2 million. And in the process, they have put out 11 million soap bars to be used by individuals, and they have put out hundreds of thousands of pounds of shampoo and conditioners back into human use. And by their doing this, they're also eliminating tons and tons of waste. So it's a product that helps our environment where we live, it's a product that helps other places in the world, and it's a product that helps those individuals that are here and we don't see very often, and help them with their hygienic process. So I'm going to turn this over to you, and I'm going to ask you to say a few words about what you do.
All right, well, thank you. It is such an honor to be here today, and thank you for all the support. You pretty much covered the spiel of it. So I started as a volunteer myself. I was originally an AmeriCorps state member, and so the impact that we've done coming to Las Vegas, the foundation, we've been around for five years. We started in Orlando, Florida, but we came to Las Vegas three years ago. And just the amazing support from all of our hospitality partners here, or even our community partners, our fellow nonprofit organizations, our in-kind donators, and most importantly, our volunteers, they just show tremendous support in our mission to save lives with soap really. And you know, we do have a two-part mission in which we want to keep all this out of landfills, but secondly, we also want to put these hygiene products in the hands that need it the most. For the essentials of food, water, and shelter that are very, very critical to our homeless population and for those that are in need of it, hygiene is actually one of the most important elements of this that is very, very scarce. And so just by simple hand washing, we can cut back on diseases. Two of the most prominent diseases worldwide, acute respiratory illness, pneumonia, and diarrheal disease, afflicts children under five years old. And by simple hand washing, we can cut back on those diseases by 30 to 65 percent. So for everyone in here, we would love to invite you to come down to our facility. We are located on Desert Inn and Valley View. And so you pretty much covered the spiel of everything. So like I said, it's an honor to be here and thank you very much for your support.
I think what she's showing is that each of us can help in some way, and each of us can think of a different type of way of helping. And it's, oh God, so much help is needed throughout the world, so each of us contributing what we can is very important. So today Shay is going to accept Citizen of the Month for the Clean the World Foundation. And our city council thanks you very much for what you do in helping us, and we give you this plaque. Thank you very much. And you can have your picture taken with all of this esteemed city council, those who are smiling and those who are not smiling.
Let's come over to sign.
Yes, let's, we have to tell you, there's a sign that says, "How wonderful you are", and it's going to be placed right outside here so everybody can see it as they go by. And I learned some years ago too, whoever you touch, having just shaken Shay's hand, the most important thing is not to put it on food and then eat it, and to wash. Every time you touch somebody, remember, don't use that hand, wash your hands, and you will not get sick. And knock on wood, I haven't in probably five years. Okay, for our next item, we have a great accomplishment to celebrate, so I'd like to invite our very special, if she hasn't left already, there she is, our very special and wonderful city manager Betsy Fretwell to come up to the podium, please. Okay, I couldn't see you over there, so I thought maybe you had left. The Action Team Award recognizes a team of employees who strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which you hear us mention every single city council, which stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. We have had a team that has worked for more than a year to secure new market tax credits to invest in low-income and underserved communities in southern Nevada. This team ensured that the city of Las Vegas received $28 million in new market tax credits from the Treasury Department. It's always nice to get something from the Treasury Department. Yes, since we pay our taxes there. This tax credit program encourages investment in traditionally underserved communities by providing investors with tax credit when they make investments in the low-income areas throughout the southern Nevada community and in particular in Las Vegas. The city of Las Vegas formed the Las Vegas Community Investment Corporation to facilitate investment in a number of key projects, including education and healthcare, and I am thrilled that the city of Las Vegas is going to be receiving these funds. The city of Las Vegas was one of 87 organizations nationwide that received tax credit allocations from a pool of 310 applicants. The city's team was the first in the history of the state of Nevada to be awarded these tax credits. And since its inception in 2000, the new market tax credit program investments have created an estimated 562,000 new jobs, supported construction of 22 million square feet of manufacturing space, 72 million square feet of office space, and 55 million square feet of retail space. So now we're going to see some of those investments right here in the city of Las Vegas. There are more than 50 city staffers and community members who work on this project for more than a year to see it come to fruition, and we're proud of every single one of the members of that great team. Today, I'm going to ask the core team members to join us here at the podium. We have wonderful, from our city attorney's office, Terri Poncello. And this work is in addition to everything else they have to do. From our Economic and Urban Development Team, we have Bill Arnt, Tim Witright. Tim, come on down, you can't hide. Susan Vanilla. Scott Carter. Where are you, Scott? Scott's fired, he couldn't make it. And Brenda Hughes. Yes, here she comes. Great team. And from Finance, Joe Williams. They wouldn't let him out? And Pam Hoff, he's working on the audit, and well, he should. Yes, he should. He's got a deadline. Yes, he does. And Pam Hoffman. They still look energized and young, all these fabulous people. And we have our consultant, Chris Hassel. Chris has been wonderful. And our advisory board of Brian Burton. He couldn't make it, so he'll keep working. Catherine Martin. I saw Janet Bluman, she's here somewhere. There she is, come on down, come on down. And Janet, as we all know, independent tomorrow. What great things you've done. Lois Mack. She didn't come? She doesn't like us?
She likes us, she gave us a lot of time.
She gave us a lot of time, okay. And Carolina Mial. So thank you all, and let's give that entire wonderful team, even the missing in action, a great round of applause. Thank you so much. This is so awesome, what you're doing for our city. And so enough for me, and it's time to let Betsy say her words, and then Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, there are a ton of people that worked with this team that helped make this all possible, so our hats off to all of them. And I'd like to ask Scott Adams to come up. We don't normally recognize the city managers group very often, but he was instrumental in working with this team and making this come to fruition, so Scott, you should be up here too. We have been working for years to achieve this that we're celebrating today, to get new market tax credits into our community, working for our community, and it's going to make a significant difference. And as you all know, as we recover from this recession, we're looking to build new and diverse businesses to help our social infrastructure get stronger so that there are adequate services out there for the citizens that are in need, so that maybe they don't have to rely on their government for that, to be honest. So those are the kinds of things that this program will help afford us an opportunity to facilitate. And but for the work of these individuals standing here, the folks standing behind them, and the folks that are now currently administering the program that are sitting in this audience, we wouldn't have that opportunity for our city. So my hat's off to each and every one of you for making this happen because I know you took a heavy lift to make it this way. And our citizens who took the time to help us build a strong application and help get this designation, we couldn't have done it without you. So thank you for volunteering and being willing to help us be successful. We couldn't do it without a team, and this is a great team to work with. So thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Betsy, and thank you to the mayor and council for recognizing this team. I think, I think Betsy hit the nail on the head. Why is this important? Normally, when you hear tax credits, you think IRS, and you go and hide, you run the other way. Well, this is a good thing. This is money that's going to come into our community that historically has not come into our community. And that allocation, what that means is it has a cash value of essentially over $5 million to put into projects in our hardest-hit areas of our community that have been hit by the recession. I'd like to thank every member of this team. I'd also like to thank Justin Perkins of Aon, like to thank Julie Murray of Moonridge Group who helped with reviewing our application. We were one of the few applicants that made it through. It was a 28 percent success rate, and we competed against all the large banks around the country, all the national banks, and we were successful. So credit to their team for helping us. Thank you to the city manager's office, IT, communications, all of those folks have helped. Thank you to everyone that's standing up here today, particularly our community advisory board, which is going to help us find the projects most deserving of need. And then finally, I want to thank our quiet team sitting over there, Phil Steckager and his team, the asset management team, who have the privilege of getting to spend the money. So they have the tough work ahead of them, but we're excited to receive this recognition. And then finally, there are a lot of other banks that want to put money in Nevada, but somebody has to go first. And we have boots on the ground here that are every day of the week looking for projects to put these monies to work. So thank you again to the mayor and council.
And how a project, how do they, where do they contact the money?
And so we have, on our website, if you click on new market tax credits, we have a special email, a special phone number to reach us. Just contact us at Economic and Urban Development Department. So if you go to lvrd.org, you can easily find us, and we are, we still have money available, so we still are looking to spend some of our allocation.
And they're not going to be dismissed, we're going back for another lift, aren't we? Going to go back in the future?
Yes, so we have an application in this year for an even larger allocation amount, where we think we can be successful, so we are kind of under the gun now to spend our, this past tax credit years' allocation wisely and spend it in the right projects and quickly and efficiently, but we've applied for an even bigger allocation, $73 million, so we're hoping to put even more money into the community.
We're so proud and thank you. And we do know, because I know the state had to give back money to the federal government, we never want to do that. So our projects must be done on a certain timeline, and you can't expect what you don't inspect. Who's the inspector, Terri? Uh huh, always. Thank you all, and congratulations, you've done so much. A photograph. Can you come in close so we can have a, our photography department and tweeting department can do this? Come on in, this is great. Great, we can go in between.
We'll go in between.
No, we can put our heads in between.
We poke this way, see?
If everybody can see the camera, then they're being seen. Great, thank you. Gosh, how much fun to spend money. What happened?
We're good.
Do you want to do it now?
How do we get a sign to the spending team, Betsy? How do we get a sign to the spending team?
You basically have to be a banker.
Okay, oh, too bad. Okay. All right, so now. For our next item, Councilman Barlow has a star whom we've seen on television. Ooh, how exciting. Are you the lucky man?
Always lucky, Mayor, thank you so very much. Good morning, everyone. Oh, good morning. All right, thank you so very much. Today, I have the privilege and honor of introducing and reintroducing a gentleman who has been before us for many, many years on television, and he lives right here in our community, and I am so very proud and honored that he not only lives in our community, but he works every single day in our community and specifically with our young people, Mr. Antonio Fargas. If you'll please come forward, and if, we'll give him a round of applause as he comes. I grew up watching him as Huggy Bear. That's when I was growing up, watching him as Huggy Bear. But I am just so excited to have you here in our community and working with our young people, and I just want to embarrass him just a little bit. He's done so much, so if you all would just please, just bear with me as I just share with you and reintroduce some of the wonderful things he has done over his career in entertainment and acting. Mr. Antonio Fargas is a retired actor with humble beginnings, which began in the state of New York. He attended school in New York and graduated from Fashion Industry High School in Manhattan. His acting aspirations began at the early age of 14 years old. He is known as a tall, lanky, twinkled-eyed African American. Go figure. An actor with a wonderful on-screen charisma, he has been onstage and on the screen for over 40 years. His impressive filmography dates back to 1963, beginning with his first role in The Cool World. How many of y'all remember The Cool World? Okay, all right. He was also in many well-known shows such as Ironside, The Cosby Show, Police Story, Sanford and Son, Huckleberry Finn, Car Wash, one of my favorites, Vegas, Charlie's Angels, All My Children, and Stealing Las Vegas, to name just a few, just a few, because I know you've been in many, many, many more. ABC executives were looking for capable actors to play the role of Golden Hearted Street informant, Huggy Bear, and Fargas scored the role with which he is most closely identified. He has appeared in over 50 movies, numerous TV shows, and countless stage productions. Fargas is a semi-retired, and we say semi because he works every day with our, with our young people throughout the community and in particular the West Las Vegas Arts Center. So we are really pleased and honored to have him bring those skill sets to our young people in this community. Fargas is, as I mentioned, is a semi-retired actor and was looking for a place to relocate which welcomed retirees. He states that he also needed a vibrant entertainment community where he could feel at home, and he was drawn to Las Vegas. Fargas had a need to get involved in the community through close friends. Ron Himes, he was invited to speak to children at the West Las Vegas Arts Center. There, Fargas reconnected with another important member of the Las Vegas show business community, Mr. Mr. Walter Mason, former entertainment director at the Las Vegas Hilton, now the, I'm not sure what the Hilton is called, but it was the LVH, and artistic director of the Arts Summer Camp, meaning Mr. Mason. The program is for youngsters 10 to 15 years old, where they learn about music, dance, theater, and spoken word. Fargas was impressed with the Arts Summer Camp program, and he joined Mason to participate as a team mentor to eager young people. The states, let me get this right. Fargas explains that the Arts Summer Camp is much of a program to teach life skills as develop, as developing specific artistic talents. He states, "We walk about, we, I'm sorry, we talk about the real world of entertainment, about success, failure, and the responsibilities of all, of all of us." I just messed that up. Failure and the responsibilities of all of us have in life. Fargas Award is known, Fargas Award is knowing, okay, how about this? How about this? Fargas, I just blew my acting career. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Mr. Fargas, thank you so very much for all that you've done, and so this is what we're going to do. We're going to let you speak because I'm starstruck and really excited about your ability to come into this community and really make a true difference in the lives of our young people. So, with that, the mayor and city council would like to present you with your own day, Mr. Fargas, and that is Mr. Antonio Fargas Day in the city of Las Vegas. Thank you.[709.83][709.83](Applause). Thank you, sir. And please share a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ricky, thank you, Mayor Goodman and the council for taking the time to, you know, to honor now an old gray beard, you know? And I've got this beard because I'm on my way to Singapore to do a film, and the benefit of that is that I'm also be working with my, with my son, who's producing it. And, you know, from a 14-year-old New Yorker who, you know, was trying to find something that, that he didn't know he was looking for, to be here in this chamber, and like the invocation said before the start of these proceedings, I really do thank my creator for this opportunity and the 54 years that I've been able to, you know, to serve and be blessed by this craft that, that was given to me, and to have my mentor, one of my mentors in, in the audience today, Walter Mason, and to have a director of the Las Vegas Arts Center, Dr. Marsha Robinson, and all of the spirits and elders and mentors that support her and support this program. And I found a home in my, when I came to Las Vegas, and I found more than I was looking for. I found a realization that this is a spiritual journey, and, and my, my greatest task is to pass on what I have, particularly to young people in this community, in particular at the West Las Vegas Arts Center. And I thank the, the city of Las Vegas for having an arts center and doors to open. This program has been one of the voices that, that needs to be heard, and sometimes the voices that need to be heard shout the softest. So, I'm here to champion the work done at the West Las Vegas Arts Center. 18 years, our, our commitment is excellence without excuse. The history and, and the payback is that the young people who have been affected, who have been touched by this center, get a chance to come back and, and give back to, to where, to where they got it from. And we have in the audience today Avery Walker, who is a dancer, who started in the program as a youngster, and now is on his way to be whatever he wants to be in the dance world. These are the kind of joys and benefits that you get by seeing the eyes and the lights come on in young people who do the art, metaphors of the art, get a chance to, you know, get survival skills to be out in, in this world, and it's a, and it's a tough world, and that they create a family. And sometimes the healing that they get at the West Las Vegas Arts Center goes back to the families, you know, where they come from. And so, much is put on their shoulders, and we're there to support them. And I really thank, you know, this community in particular, such as, gentlemen such as yourself, Lawrence Weekly, who are, who are familiar with the work that goes on here, and silent supporters, and, and they're, you know, for, for these young people. It's just, you know, as, as the lady said, you've said everything about me that, that needs to be said, but, you know, to be standing here, you know, as a 14-year-old now, you know, 68, and starting at 14, to have 54 years of, of doing something that, that, that really, in a sense, saved my life, because this was all meant to be. So, I, I appreciate you, thank you so much. And I also want to thank my wife.[983.62][983.62](Applause). The wives who put up with, you hear it all the time, you know, it's always, you know, the, the wife who puts up with the, you know, with the schedules and the things that I have to do in order to fulfill what I feel my destiny is, and it's wonderful to have, you know, a wife behind me. Thank you.
You're so welcome.[1009.04][1009.04](Applause). And, Mr. Fargas, if you don't mind holding us like this, and if the mayor and council will come around for a photo, and please, Ms. Fargas, if you'll please come forward as well.
Congratulations, we appreciate all that you've done for the world, actually, and have a safe trip to Singapore. Does she get to go with you?
Much success.
It's a long trip, so she's going to stay home until Christmas.
I don't blame her.
All right.
Congratulations. You're part of the day for sure. You get the day part. All right, one, two, three. So, he's going by himself.
Much success, see.
24-hour trip or something. Thank you. No, it's just wonderful. Have a safe trip. And for our final item, we have Mayor Pro Tem is going to recognize a wonderful group.
Thank you, mayor. Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Sun City Summerlin.
Good morning.
(Laughs). All right, as, as most of you know, next Tuesday is Veterans Day in this country, and that's the day that we honor the men and women that have served in the military and sacrificed to make sure that our freedoms are protected. Next Tuesday, in the city of Las Vegas, we're going to have the Veterans Day Parade, starts at 10:00 a.m. on Fourth Street, right down here downtown. It is the second-largest Veterans Day Parade in the country, and it is the largest west of the Mississippi. So, we in the city of Las Vegas make sure we honor, recognize our veterans. In line with the celebration, it's my hope that all of us also remember all the groups and organizations that devote so much of their time and resources to our veterans. One of those groups that I want to recognize today is the Sun City Summerlin Military and Friends Club, and it's my honor to recognize their members. At this point, I'd like to invite the president, Herman Bishop. If you could please come down, Herman.[1155.12][1155.12](Applause). Give him a nice round of applause.[1157.54][1157.54](Applause). Gerald Dano, who's the vice president, is Gerald here?
No, he had a doctor's appointment.
Gerald is not here. Andy Shazaz, is Andy here? Come on down, Andy. Andy is the treasurer of the club. And Lorraine Spafford. Lorraine, why don't you come down? Lorraine is the secretary of the club. So, these are the directors of the Sun City Summerlin Military and Friends Club. The club was founded in Sun City in 1994 by seven retired officers to recognize our military. And obviously, it is the 20th anniversary, so congratulations, 20 years of recognizing our veterans. The club wanted to make, wanted to make sure the residents of Sun City were aware of the presence of military families in the community, and to give members the opportunity to recall their military careers. The club is strong because of the dedication and devotion of their leadership and membership. The club currently has 80 members, and 90% of those members are veterans. Included in the club's membership are both male and female veterans from each branch of the services, and we have members who have served in World War II and the conflict since then. The friends in the, in the club include spouses of veterans who have passed away and friends of the military who are interested in veteran affairs. In addition to the recognition of the national military holidays, the club holds six functions every year. A New Year's, a New Year's Eve celebration, a Veterans Day dance, a picnic in May, a harvest dinner in October, a Veterans Day remembrance, and a Pearl Harbor Day remembrance. The club has three worthy objectives: to provide support to military-related personnel, organizations, and functions; to provide information about veterans and governmental programs or resources available to their members; and to provide opportunities for their members to interact socially. Just as important, we want to ensure the public is made aware of the sacrifices our military veterans make and have made to ensure our country's security and the freedoms that we currently have. At this point, I'd like to ask the president, Mr. Bishop, to say a few words about the club.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say, normally, we don't wear our hats inside, but we wanted to let you know who we are.
Absolutely.
(Laughs). I did appreciate the opportunity of inviting us to come in this morning, because Veterans Day is a big thing for us, and we'd like to be recognized. I would like to thank our group for coming in this morning, and especially, we have one gentleman I'd like to recognize, George Fantitis, is our oldest active member, he's 95 years old, and he's a World War II veteran.[1328.12][1328.12](Applause). They're glad we're with us, George.
George, why don't you stand, and why don't we have all the veterans stand up? Why don't you have all of you stand up there in the club?[1337.04][1337.04](Applause).
I think you've covered all of the points, I don't know what's left.[1352.04][1352.04](Laughter). No, that's fine, I just, like I say, I'm, I'm glad for the members that came out this morning, and we do appreciate the recognition, sir.
Great, well, you deserve it. So, thank you all for, for coming down. In recognition, I have a, thank you, mayor, I have a certificate of recognition for every single one of your members for the Sun City Summerlin Military and Friends Club, signed by the mayor and the entire city council, recognizing your club and all the veterans in your club. So, thank you very much for coming out this morning. God bless all of you, and I hope to see you all at the parade next Tuesday. All right, thank you very much.[1391.54][1391.54](Applause).
Now, do you, congratulations, thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And for all, everyone who has served our country so well and beautifully that we remain through.
Very much.
It's a very, very significant day next Tuesday. Okay, did we? All right, we're going to continue on with the rest of the agenda. We'll probably take five minutes so we can switch over the technology and remove the podium and the microphone and ask for our mover.
Do you want to take a photo with me?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
I'll make a quick, quick shot. I want to hold it.
(Laughter).
You're better.
You can go with that.
Yeah.
All right. We're going to continue on with the rest of the agenda. We'll probably take five minutes so we can switch over the technology and remove the podium and the microphone and ask for our mover.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a photo with me?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
(Laughter).
You're better.
You can go with that.
Yeah.
World Book of whatever four times in my lifetime, and I didn't --
Wonderful.
I didn't -- they said, "That go all over the world," whatever. But there's a lot of things that has happened in my life that I don't even have, you know, any inklings of it going on, but because I love people, I'm always in the public anyway. Anyway, Mayor, I just want to say, I come down to spend a few minutes with y'all. I know it's a short day, and the parade's coming up next week, and I hope I can be down there and cheer the veterans on and cheering them on the chair myself on, you know. Spent a lot of time out in the middle of the Pacific Ocean with the Navy, but that's not the point. There's so many things in my life that it'd take forever to explain, so I don't want to go there. But I always sit off on the side and watch other people enjoy themselves, because if I get involved, then everything focuses on me, and then they lose their focus. So, that's why I kind of back out on a lot of things, because I don't be taking the limelight from other people.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me come down, and I'll stay to the end and throw myself out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to Agenda Item Ten. Business Items: Possible Action. Any items the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
I don't have any items.
Goodness. It's not Christmas yet. Okay, there are none. So, let's move on to Agenda Item Eleven. For Possible Action: To approve the final minutes by reference to the regular city council meeting of September seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Move for approval.
This is a motion. Please vote, and please post. And for the public, Councilman Ross has been excused from the meeting today. All right. Agenda Items Twelve through Thirty-seven on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward?
That one item is not included in the consent, correct? The one about the marijuana extension district?
Any Councilmen Beers? Anything? Councilman Anthony?
I will move for approval of the Consent Agenda Items Twelve through Thirty-seven.
Thank you very much. This is a motion. Please vote, and please post. Okay, we're on to -- and that motion carries. We're on to Agenda Item Thirty-eight. This is an administrative report by Dr. Joseph Isar, Chief Health Officer of Southern Nevada Health District regarding the West African Ebola, and this is in reference to all wards. And good morning. And Ms. Fretwell, do you want to introduce or hello and whatever?
Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Betsy Fretwell, City Manager. I think it's a real honor to have Dr. Isar here this morning to give us an update on an emerging public health issue that has caused a lot of concern. There's quite a bit of information out there for people to inform themselves, but we felt that it would be really helpful to have Dr. Isar come and give a presentation so that the public has access to that information, and also for you to be able to ask him questions about our level of preparedness, the kinds of things that we need to be prepared for as a city for not only this kind of public health issue, but any others, quite frankly. So, we really appreciate Dr. Isar taking the time out of his schedule to come and share this information with us today, and we look forward to a very thorough presentation. And personally, I appreciate the partnership that we've developed since he's been here in town. So, it's great to have you here, Dr. Isar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Metta Mayor, honorable members of the council, good morning. Thank you for having me here. I would like to reiterate the relationship that we've developed with the City of Las Vegas has been very, very, very good. I'd add another one or two, but I think you get the point. My staff really enjoys working with your staff, Betsy, Ms. Fretwell, and we appreciate having the two board members on your council, who are my board members as well, so I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about ten weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So, first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks, and we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least thirties, maybe up to forty. So, I wanted to thank them for their service.
Okay, we are now on Agenda Item 9, which is Public Comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is going to be allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items, and if anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We'll set the time at this point to one minute.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. How are you? Lisa Mayo DeReso for the record here for the Nevada Soccer Association. I'm just here today. Item 40 is on your agenda. I just want to remind you that the Nevada Soccer Association is still hoping that the $3 million in parks and rec money is still protected and not going to be considered as part of the stadium component as we move forward. I wanted to let you know, too, the Nevada Soccer Association, we pay about $100,000 a year, not including lights, as fees for using the parks, and for tournaments, we pay over $1 million a year to the city as part of this investment. And one of the things I'm hearing from our coaches and our parents is, we'd like to be a little bit more involved in where this $3 million might be spent and things we could do with that. And I know the public budget process is coming up, so I'm hoping that, once we get this stadium over, maybe we could talk about how the Nevada Soccer Association could assist in talking about the budget of that $3 million and where it might best be spent, since we are the largest user of parks and rec. So I wanted that in the public record, and I always also wanted to say, congratulations to Tim Hacker. I think you've made a wonderful choice. The Nevada Soccer Association, I've had a chance to work with him. He's great, and I'm excited that you have this also on your agenda. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Pardon me, Mayor. My name is Anthony Hodges. I just come down to say hello again, but I've been notified that I made it in Guinness World Book of whatever four times in my lifetime, and I didn't...
Wonderful.
They said that go all over the world, whatever. But there's a lot of things that has happened in my life that I don't even have, you know, any inklings of it going on, but because I love people, I'm always in the public anyway. Anyway, Mayor, I just want to say, I come down to spend a few minutes with y'all. I know it's a short day, and the parade's coming up next week, and I hope I can be down there and cheer the bratwursts on and cheering them on the chair myself on, you know. Spent a lot of time out in the middle of the Pacific Ocean with the Navy, but that's not the point. There's so many things in my life that it'd take forever to explain, so I don't want to go there. But I always sit off on the side and watch other people enjoy themselves, because if I get involved, then everything focuses on me, and then they lose their focus. So that's why I kind of back out on a lot of things, because I don't be taking the lime life from other people.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me come down, and I'll stay to the end and throw myself out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to Agenda Item 10. Business Items: Possible Action. Any items the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
I don't have any items.
Goodness, it's not Christmas yet. Okay, there are none. So let's move on to Agenda Item 11. For Possible Action: To approve the final minutes by reference to the regular City Council meeting of September 17, 2014. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Move for approval.
This is a motion. Please vote, and please post. And for the public, Councilman Ross has been excused from the meeting today. All right. Agenda Items 12 through 37 on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward?
That one item is not included in the consent, correct? The one about the marijuana extension district?
Any Councilmen beers? Anything? Councilman Anthony?
I will move for approval of the Consent Agenda Items 12 through 37.
Thank you very much. This is a motion. Please vote, and please post. Okay, we're on to, and that motion carries, we're on to Agenda Item 38. This is an administrative report by Dr. Joseph Isar, Chief Health Officer of Southern Nevada Health District regarding the West African Ebola. And this is in reference to all wards, and good morning. And Ms. Fretwell, do you want to introduce, or hello, and whatever?
Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Betsy Fretwell, City Manager. I think it's a real honor to have Dr. Isar here this morning to give us an update on an emerging public health issue that has caused a lot of concern. There's quite a bit of information out there for people to inform themselves, but we felt that it would be really helpful to have Dr. Isar come and give a presentation so that the public has access to that information, and also for you to be able to ask him questions about our level of preparedness, the kinds of things that we need to be prepared for as a city, for not only this kind of public health issue, but any others, quite frankly. So we really appreciate Dr. Isar taking the time out of his schedule to come and share this information with us today, and we look forward to a very thorough presentation. And personally, I appreciate the partnership that we've developed since he's been here in town. So it's great to have you here, Dr. Isar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Metamayor, honorable members of the council, good morning. Thank you for having me here. I would like to reiterate the relationship that we've developed with the City of Las Vegas has been very, very, very good. I'd add another one or two, but I think you get the point. My staff really enjoys working with your staff, Betsy, Ms. Fretwell, and we appreciate having the two board members on your council, who are my board members as well, so I wanted to thank them for their service. I am here today to talk about Ebola and the efforts that we have done over the last, now about 10 weeks, since we realized that there would likely be a case here in the United States, which has come true. So first of all, Ebola virus is one of five hemorrhagic viral fevers that live generally in the jungle in Africa, and every so often, these emerge from the jungle. We think that Ebola is carried primarily by bats, and so somehow, a primate, a jungle primate, may eat the bat, and then with bushmeat being one of the ways that people in Africa survive, that with slaughtering a monkey, that might be infected with Ebola, and then having cuts on hands would be a very efficient way to transmit the disease. But normally, we don't see it in humans, except in certain outbreaks. And we have had these outbreaks that we know about for at least 30, maybe up to 40 years. This one just happens to be the biggest one that we have ever seen and certainly hope to ever see again. The incubation period is very important. It's 2 to 21 days, and incubation period is a period of time that if I were to have Ebola and were to transmit it to someone here, either in the audience behind me or one of you, that incubation period is a period of time in which you are asymptomatic, have no symptoms, and then start to develop symptoms. That could be 2 days, up to 21 days, and therefore, the magic number of 21 days that you hear in the media through, from CDC and others, that after that period of time, the risk of contracting Ebola from an exposure is virtually nil. The normal incubation period, the most frequent number of patients who will come down with Ebola is 8 to 10 days after exposure. And I think it's really important to know that a person is not infectious unless they have symptoms. And those symptoms are on this page. So at first, we thought that everyone invariably had a fever, and generally over a 101.5, but now we know that the fever can be less than that, and actually can be less than 100.4, which is what we tend to look for. But about 87% of patients with Ebola will have fever, and then, under the first bullet, are several other symptoms that people may have in the early stages, and then the progressive stages. Later on, when someone starts to develop, all of the complications are seen in the second one. And the bleeding is really symptomatic of the hemorrhagic part of hemorrhagic fever that we see with Ebola, and these other four viruses. And again, symptoms will develop within 2 to 21 days.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, Mayor.
There is the bleeding, just for the public, but for us as well. Is it evident through urine, through feces, vomiting, or all of the...
It could be any or all of those.
About runny nose, might that...
It could be, because the capillaries become very fragile, almost anything can bleed, so even from the conjunctiva, the clear area around the eye. But in general, where we would see it is with trauma, and that happens during vomiting, and with explosive diarrhea, which we can see with Ebola as well. So we can see the bleeding there, and with any kind of a cut that might occur as well. The fatality rates in other Ebola outbreaks have been anywhere from 25% to 90% of the people who come down with Ebola, and in this case, it's 50%, and that rate is starting to decline a little bit, now that we have lots of volunteers in Western Africa taking care in a better manner than what they had been taking care of before, the patients in Western Africa. And of course, the death rate here in the United States is only 1 out of about 8 or 9 cases that we have now. If you want to read a scary book, there is a book by an author, and I'd be glad to get it to you, who has been seen in the media a lot discussing this epidemic here. And she wrote about a case that came over in experimental monkeys in Reston, Virginia, where they brought in Ebola. No one got infected. No one knows why no one got infected. But the scary part about it, and this is what scares the public, is that it's unpredictable what may happen. So if you go outside that research facility and across a parking lot, you can see a grade school on the other side of the fence. But no one got infected in this particular case. So these are the countries with widespread activity, and you can barely read, but at the top is Guinea, which has a little bit less than Sierra Leone, which is in the middle, where a lot of those yellow spots start to show up. And then at the bottom is Liberia, and those are the three countries that we're worried about. There have been a few other cases outside of these three countries, but those have been contained through normal procedures. As I mentioned, there have been several outbreaks, many outbreaks of Ebola, and the countries where Ebola usually breaks out are very used to working with it, containing it very quickly. But, for example, Nigeria had a few cases and several deaths, and that has been contained in that country. For cases outside of West Africa, you can see in the bottom right of your screen, the countries with Ebola outbreaks. There was one in Nigeria, which is that large country to the east of the three on the coast of Africa. But again, that's been contained. We still are seeing outbreaks in those three countries, and patients have been transferred, generally, from inside that zone for care outside, and those have been to Europe and to the United States. The one case, of course, in Dallas was a gentleman who came in asymptomatic and then developed symptoms, and subsequently was hospitalized and died. And you can see that in Dallas. If you look at Dallas, two, there are the two empty, I believe they're green squares. Those are the two nurses who were exposed and have come down with Ebola, and now are Ebola-free, and they were transferred to Atlanta, Emory University, and to NIH in Bethesda. And the newest case is that doctor who recently had been caring for patients in Africa, which is that red square up in New York. So these change from week to week, and we update that map that you just saw in these cases from week to week. But you can see that the death rate really changes from a high of 61% in Guinea down to 0% in other places. And in fact, it's been virtually zero in Spain, although, and in Senegal, where there was a case as well. The overall death rate from this outbreak has really decreased to about 36%.
What does mail mean? Is that the US mail under Spain, or is that a country I've never...
Oh, that's misspelled. That's Mali.
Mali.
Thank you for...
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Well, that's interesting. You never know what you get in the mail.
That's a new country that just joined the United Nations about three years. No, it's Mali.
Thank you.
Sir, thank you. So again, this is not easily contracted. The fear is, however, if 1/3 to 1/2 of everyone who comes down with Ebola dies, it's a very serious threat. But again, it's a little bit difficult to catch. You can only catch it through direct contact with blood or bodily fluids of ill persons, and healthcare workers are at particular risk because of the use of needles, other sharp instruments, as in the second bullet. It's not airborne, so if I had Ebola and were coughing here, no one in this room would get it. Now, if I were coughing up material, and we talked about that a little bit earlier, sputum, then that could be an infectious material, but it's not airborne, and it's not spread through food or water. This is a theory that we use to track diseases. So if you look at the far left of your screen, an R of 0, and we have some infectious diseases that are like that. Rabies is one of those, that we virtually never see a case of one person with rabies giving it to another. We see it with animal contact. Botulism, although that's more of a toxin, that's another disease that isn't transmissible from one person. The West Nile virus that everyone knows about here is not transmissible from one person to another. It's transmissible through the mosquito, which is the vector in that case. So those would have an R of 0. But if you go to the far right, measles and other childhood infectious diseases have a much higher rate of infectivity, and so, on the average, every case with measles will expose and will come down with another 18 cases of measles. And if you look at the, towards the left of that, about every person with Ebola will transmit to two other people. But again, the worrisome part is, then those two people may transmit to two other people, and why we really have to intervene at the source, which is in Western Africa, to stop this from continuing. There are no Ebola-specific treatments. There are experimental vaccines that will be used in Western Africa because of the seriousness of the outbreak there, probably not here in the United States, because it's virtually, it's so rare that someone would be exposed here, that it wouldn't be useful to give a vaccine here. The serum that you've seen being transferred from a patient who has survived, like the young doctors who came over from Africa, to another patient, there are good theoretical reasons why that should work. And if I were to have Ebola, I would certainly ask one of those people who have survived to give me their serum, but there's no guarantee that it works. And it's unethical to do the kinds of studies, a double-blind controlled study, to see if it would work, since the best efforts, our best thoughts, are that it probably will. This is what we do at the Health District, day to day, week to week, month to month, year to year. We do contact tracing, and those are for the diseases that you hear more about. And I'm sure you've heard about the TB cases that we've had here over the last year. That's something that we do every day. Sexually transmitted diseases, gonorrhea, syphilis, and others, we do. If we were to get an outbreak of measles, mumps, rubella, that's also what we would do, is we would find the cases that might have been exposed to protect them from coming down with the disease, and to protect additional cases from coming down. Norovirus is another very good example. If we and our hotel industry, or whoever, the schools intervene very quickly, we can stop a norovirus outbreak very quickly, but we have to do the contact tracing to do it. This is one of the algorithms that we've developed for our medical providers. It's not important to go over this here, but we wanted you to know that we have been working very closely with EMS and all of our medical providers to get initially our own algorithms out, and now, as time has gone by, CDC is how I would phrase this, has caught up with us and other local health jurisdictions, who have been on the forefront of looking at, how can we prevent further transmission and treat someone who comes down with Ebola? It can only be definitively tested for at CDC right now, but there are labs, our closest ones right now are LA and Phoenix. Even the state health lab up north doesn't have the ability to do preliminary testing, but within the next week or two, that should come out to most labs like our own here in Southern Nevada. So we should be able to do a preliminary test. The results will be back, in that case, 12, 15 hours after we get the sample. But to go through CDC, which is the definitive testing, we would get the preliminary testing back if it's positive, make sure that CDC has a sample. That'll take 48 to 72 hours. But during that period of time, with a preliminary positive test, we would act, the hospitals would act, EMS would act, and the patient, him or herself, would want to be acted to get them into care. I think this is an important message, is that it's a not very robust organism outside the body. It dies within a couple of hours of being on contacts of surfaces. Again, let me reiterate that if I were to have Ebola, and I were to walk through the doors, no one could get infected from that. But if I were to cough into my hand and then use a doorknob, then that's a way that it could be transmitted if someone grabbed the doorknob and then touched their eyes, nose, or mouth. It's because of that phlegm that may be involved there, but it's not...
Mayor, Doctor, may I interrupt you?
Sure, but it's not airborne in the sense of the term. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to ask you, Doctor, but bodily fluids include perspiration. So if, and I understand that it is transmissible through that. I have other questions I'll ask later, but as long as it's relevant. You know, you could leave your virus on a surface if your hands are perspiring. Am I right?
You could. There's very little in perspiration, and again, you'd have to be symptomatic before you could leave it in any kind of a body fluid.
Correct, right. Right, but it could stay theoretically on a doorknob...
For a couple of hours.
Or on an entrance to a door or a large facility.
Sure, the smaller the volume, the more likely it is to dry. So this virus is very easily killed by these kinds of interventions. Clorox easily can do it, and other interventions, anything that works for norovirus. But it also dies when it dries up, and it dies if it's out...
I thought it could last for a couple of hours when it's dry.
No, for a couple of hours altogether.
Uh-huh.
In bodily fluids outside the body. Inside the body, it can last for 48 hours, more or less, in someone who has died from Ebola.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So CDC has just updated and has a new video out. We were in the process of developing our own video or instructions on how to properly put on personal protective equipment and take it off, but CDC has now put out a video, and these guidance that you'll see on this in the next page have been updated, and we will be getting those out to our providers. So again, this is not where someone would be exposed, because they're putting it on before exposure, but when they take it off is when we could see exposure. During those Dallas cases, the standard at that point was to have coverings that allowed some of the neck to show through. I'm sure you've seen that on some of the videos, and some of the nurses have reported that as well. That was the standard that CDC put out early, because that was the standard that WHO had been using. So if you get some material from an invasive procedure onto that open skin, and there happens to be a cut there, or you were to touch it, scratch it, then touch your eyes, nose, or mouth, then that's when you could be infected. And again, taking off, doffing the personal protective equipment can be very dangerous, because there could be material on the outside. And so we're going along with the CDC recommendations to have, if we do have a hospitalized patient, to have someone watch as people put, and help them put their gear on, watch and help them take their gear off, in order to prevent any contact with infective material. So for most people, I'm not talking about hospital workers now, using the regular personal protective equipment that people may use in a hotel, in food service, will protect them. So plain gloves, they don't have to be sterile gloves, will protect them. We have developed in our go-kits a variety of things, which would include a surgical mask. You don't need the fancy masks to protect, because it's not airborne, so surgical masks, gloves. And because we may be going into homes from time to time, I've asked them to put booties in, so that they can walk in with disposable booties on. But my staff should not be taking care, taking care of anyone with Ebola, but we may be monitoring people, as you've heard other health districts have been doing. And so what we would also advise is to avoid any kind of skin contact with the blood or bodily fluids of ill persons. And as I've warned the tourist industry, that's likely to happen in hotel rooms. I think that we can imagine how there could be a variety of bodily fluids in hotel rooms that people should be doing what they should be doing anyway, which is wearing the gloves to gather up the sheets. So this is important for you to know, is that we have worked with our PSCs, which are dispatches, to make sure that they have a protocol down, where if we get a call in, they can ask the two questions that you'll see at the end of this slide presentation to determine if there's any risk at all. Then when they make the call out to EMS, they will let them know that the test, these questions, have been presumed positive. But I want EMS at the site to do the same two questions, to make sure. Then they would don or put on their personal protective equipment beyond what they normally would to go in and take care. They would then radio that back to the receiving hospital, and then, if at all possible, the hospital should send someone out into the bay, to the ambulance. That gives the hospital time to reconfigure its emergency room, take patients from one area over and put them in another, so that they can have a nice quarantinable area to take care of a possible patient with Ebola. The hospitals, EMS, all know this, and they're all complying with this. So as you know, Clark County, Las Vegas as a city, we as a district have, we use an all-hazards approach, and as you know, biological threats, bioterrorism, generally would come to us as the leads, as the health leads for the county. And we do, as you well know, joint training and exercises. We're doing that with the hospitals right now and with EMS. You've heard that there are some hospitals who have self-designated, that they will be ready and prepared to take patients with Ebola. And those hospitals have been, all hospitals should be, but I know those hospitals are doing exercises to make sure that they can receive patients from an ambulance and do all the things they need to do to protect other patients and themselves. So Clark County is a high-volume destination. That's one of the reasons we've been working on this issue for 10 weeks now. We've had meetings, we've had three meetings with EMS, we've had meetings with the infection control managers, we've had meetings with your and the rest of the emergency managers for the cities and the county. We've had meetings with the hotel industry. I've had meetings with the school. There's a meeting with the libraries coming up. Anyone who has significant public contact, we've been reaching out to and trying to do presentations just like this. The last bullet is very important, that the McCarran incident response really indicated that our planning had been put into place in enough time that we could respond to that. In that case, a flight attendant noticed a very ill child and mother on an airplane, notified the captain, who notified his airline, who notified the airport authority, who notified EMS and us, and everyone responded. We asked the appropriate questions, and these two people did not come from one of the countries of interest, and therefore were allowed to go on their way. So these are the two questions, and this is my last slide. The two questions are really important in orders that we can be prepared for a patient who might have Ebola. Has the person traveled to Guinea, Liberia, or Sierra Leone in the past 21 days? If they were there 25 days ago, doesn't matter. If they were never in those three countries, it doesn't matter. Only if the first answer is yes, do you go to the second question, which is, does the person have fever or compatible Ebola symptoms? And you saw those on the first few slides. And if the answer is yes, then it's going to be a presumed positive until we get a laboratory test back, and that's when it should be reported to everyone that I've talked about here earlier, and then to our Office of Epidemiology, and that's the number that we've had 24/7 for years and is available, and we've been helping many, many people go through these two questions. This last weekend, I was a bit surprised, being a long weekend, that we really didn't get many calls, and that's unusual compared to previous days and weekends. So the message is getting out. People are comfortable using the algorithm and are as prepared as I think we can be.
Thank you, Doctor. We have vehicles that are specifically ready for transport of Ebola patients from one place to another?
There are two answers to that. One is that we have given out some recommendations as to how to cover the interior of a vehicle. Again, any patient should not be in extreme duress. There's no emergency. There's a bit of a mild urgency to get them quarantined and into care, but there's no reason to rush them into an emergency room, so we can take time to prepare, and that's when the emergency services workers would put on their personal protective equipment, go in, retrieve the patient, and bring them. There is one agency here in Southern Nevada who can do the cleanup, and you saw that with the apartment for Mr. Duncan in Dallas, where there was a certified agency who can come into what we call a Class A infectious agent. We have one here. The industry knows about them, and they can come in and do the cleaning if they want to. But again, as I pointed out earlier, any kind of a solution that is good for norovirus should be good. should be good, and is good for Ebola. Plain old bleach, I think it's one cup and a gallon, will kill the virus too. Again, it's not a very hardy virus.
Except for the bleeding, most of the symptoms could be flu. So the parent that happens to be watching, and as a child who has muscle aches, vomiting, fever, there is, would you make a comment, a professional comment about whatever?
Sure. My professional comment would be, look out for the common cold or influenza, especially this time of year. One of the points I try to make is that influenza will kill far, far, far more people than Ebola has killed in Africa and throughout the world right now. But this year alone, there'll be fifteen to twenty-five thousand deaths, maybe more, due to influenza. And we do have a good vaccine for that, and that's what I would recommend. But that's what a mother or father should be worried about in a child with nausea and vomiting. If they've had no contact with anyone from one of these three countries, or themselves haven't been visiting them, they're not at risk.
Thank you very, very much.
And I get questions from friends just like that. So I appreciate your-
Well, and I know parents, and when you hear all of this information, you think, oh my gosh. You don't realize and sit back and say, wait a minute, there's nobody who's been to either of these countries that has been in this house, or to our knowledge, been in the school or whatever.
Sure.
And are all hospitals prepared, and all hospitals, not just the few? Do they know which are the hospitals that are prepared?
Every hospital has to be prepared. So if you're in Boulder City, or any other of our outlying cities, there could be, very, very unlikely, but there could be a patient who came in and said, I was in Liberia two weeks ago, and I've got a fever. And so every single hospital has to be prepared. We've had discussions with them, they know that. But we did ask for some hospitals, the larger ones in particular, if they could volunteer one of their system hospitals to be better prepared, to go through all of the exercises. There are criteria by which CDC will be choosing these hospitals across the nation. They're not public yet, but we've got an advanced copy of that, and we will be using those to measure the preparedness of certainly those four hospitals, and then every single hospital in the valley. If I may, other questions I get is, what worries me? What keeps me up at night, and it's not Ebola? It's some other disease that we have yet to see in the United States, or haven't, have seen only rarely, like SARS, and you heard about that a couple of years ago. If influenza H5N1 becomes airborne, human-to-human transmissible, and it's theoretically possible that that can happen, then that would worry me greatly. Because again, we see a disease that has about a fifty percent mortality rate, at least where it's showing up in Southeast Asia right now. There are other things that worry me more, but this is a very good opportunity for all of us to look at our systems and how they collaborate with each other and coordinate. This gives us an opportunity to exercise parts of those systems, as what happened with the prisoner who came from, who went to UMC a couple of weeks ago now. That certainly exercised the system there, until we found out that he'd never even been out of the country. So with, and if I may, I don't mean to prolong this, but every single real-life event, this is a real-life event, could be an earthquake, could be a flood, every single exercise that we do, and we had an exercise related to Ebola a couple of years ago, all of the exercises that we do, all of us, all of the partners who respond in an urgent situation, learn something new, and change what they're doing because of something that they learned. It could be something as simple as, how do you address the public? It could be something more complex, like what is the proper PPE, personal protective equipment? But every single exercise, we learn something new.
And to take you one step further, we're going into the holidays in three weeks. A lot of families, of course, have travel plans. Recommendations there, because people have even called my office to say, I'm planning a cruise with my family.
Sure.
And I would say, I can't imagine, if you're gonna take a cruise around the infected area where there are infected people, in Africa perhaps, but I can't imagine anything else. But I don't even know what to respond.
Sure, this is my answer, and I've been asked this publicly, and it would be the same answer I would give my brother, my sister, my grandchildren, although they're too young to travel on their own. What I, I actually went on a short trip to Santa Anita this last weekend. My best friend won a contest that allowed him to go to the Breeders' Cup. He and his wife invited me to go along, so I took a bus. You can't get more public transportation than a bus between here and Union Station in LA. I do, I've got a car that I purchased up in the Bay Area, I'm gonna fly up there this weekend and drive it down here. I will not, this doesn't give me the least amount of fears at all. And if you've seen, it doesn't look like anyone who were on, who were on that same airplane with the second nurse has come down with any symptoms whatsoever. So I think it's safe to fly, it's certainly safe to drive, and it's safe, and I believe it's safe to take the bus or the train.
So it is, it's untrue that the air circulating in your plane with someone who may have been infected?
That's safe. Now, I can't tell you that for influenza, and I can't tell you that for tuberculosis, but I can tell you that for Ebola.
Thank you.
We're very clear of that. There's never been a disease like this one that has become airborne. And if you look at similar diseases, hepatitis B, hepatitis C, even HIV are somewhat similar, they aren't airborne, and are never going to be airborne. This one won't be either. But again, influenza is scary to me, and certainly tuberculosis is.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilwoman, and then Councilman Coffin, please.
On TV recently, I just saw part of it, but it was, it was dealing with a country in that African area where Ebola is rapidly moving, that they have not had any deaths, any cases. Are you aware of that country? It showed that they tested the temperature of the schoolchildren every day.
Yeah, I have read that. And as I'm sure you know, that anyone leaving these three countries on an airplane are tested several times. I've heard that from, I think her name is Dr. Nancy Snyderman, the correspondent for NBC News, that when she left, along with, as you know, her cameraman, who did become infected, they tested the temperature several times. I don't know honestly what they do in Europe, but now everyone from those five countries are flying into one of our, one of those three countries, are flying into one of our five cities that are set up specially to handle patients, people who may have come from those countries, where their temperatures are tested again. That's when we'll know about it, and when CDC and our systems that are in place will let us know if there might be someone traveling here, so that we can monitor them for the twenty-one days that's required.
The amazing thing to me was that it was right there in the middle of where the Ebola epidemic is, and they hadn't had a case. I just wondered, what else did they do besides testing the temperature, taking the temperature of the children every day? Because, you know, they're right in the middle of everything, and they must have people traveling back and forth.
I can remember my grandparents, and my aunt and uncle in particular, who owned a farm in northwest Missouri, and how they used to talk about when their elders died or their siblings died, that the family took the body, bathed it, dressed it, laid it out on the dining room table. I'm sure that some people here remember that from, if you come from a farm or a rural area, you would know that. That's what the respect for our predecessors had, for their predecessors. That's what goes on in Africa now. But that culture has to change. People come in, relatives come in, and they bathe ill patients without any personal protective equipment with Ebola, very likely to get infected that way. And they have very specific funeral arrangements, where they have to bathe the body, and everyone has to come and touch the body. That's now changing as well. So that's one of the things that I know is happening in the western countries of Africa where this outbreak has been.
Thank you.
There are a variety of cultural things that are changing.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. The question I have, and I've heard it before, I don't know if I heard an adequate answer, and that is that, well, you know, with all the behavior of people toward those who have been exposed, it's really embarrassing to see what they've done, to chase people around who are just trying to ride a bicycle, you know, in the area. And I'm thinking, my God, why not, why wait the twenty-one days? Can you take a blood test? And then immediately know, or at what point in the stage of the disease can you, you know, get an effective blood test that would say, you have it or don't have it?
After someone shows some of the symptoms that we talked about, it may take up to a day or two for the blood test to turn positive. But the blood test won't be positive if there aren't any symptoms. So the young nurse up in, it's not quite rural, but in a small town in Maine that you're referring to, will not be safe until she's twenty-one days outside and away from the country where she was helping to take care of Ebola patients. And that's the incubation period, and there's no way to test, that I'm aware of, before that to assure. She has had, so she says, two Ebola blood tests that have shown to be negative. But again, those won't turn positive until, and if, and I doubt if she will, but if she starts to have symptoms, that's when the test will turn positive.
Where would the virus reside if it's not in the blood? I guess-
It wouldn't be at enough levels. It has to grow in order to show symptoms. And so it takes a while for that to happen. That's true for virtually any disease.
Another question I had-
Yes, sir.
I think it boils down to preparation. I remember reading a book, I bought a book twenty years ago called The Coming Plague.
That's the one I was referring to.
Oh.
Laurie Garrett, her name.
Fifty or sixty pages in one chapter, on the first detected emergence of Ebola, and the horrible things that happened, and how no one knew what they were doing, and a lot of volunteers died. And, you know, it's like almost, it was forgotten, in almost forty years, I mean, whatever happened was forgotten. And I just think that's a shame, because, you know, you know it's one of the hemorrhagic, okay, so you know that, so you know how to treat it, but yet, you know, you couldn't get people to treat it right, even in areas where it continues to come up. So I think we're gonna see this again and again. But there was one thing that was interesting. In that book, it talks about how it was, there was a cluster of it, right in a little county there, and then there was another cluster, separated by a long way, jungle travel, meaning nobody was moving very fast back and forth. And they both erupted at the same time. And they went away, of course, you know, with time, but still, I don't know whether that mystery was ever solved.
I don't know if I'd call that a mystery. A mystery is something that you can't solve, so maybe the mystery is the right term, but it could be that hunters were out together, found the same bush meat, slaughtered it together, or slaughtered monkeys living from the same group at different times. So I think that they'll never be known what you're referring to. I don't think that the lessons were lost. In the countries where Ebola generally breaks out, they're very, very well-handled. I didn't report about it here, but in the Democratic Republic of the Congo, there's a small Ebola outbreak. They've had many Ebola outbreaks. They know how to deal with it, they know how to contain it, and it will not become the issue that it has in western Africa, where they didn't know the disease, didn't have experience with it. So the countries where Ebola and Marburg and some of these other hemorrhagic fevers break out really are aware and can deal with those. Oftentimes, they do occur, as in Ms. Garrett's book, in a very rural area, a small village that can be contained geographically.
Okay, thank you. And if any members of the council want to borrow that book and read those fifty pages, it's fascinating.
Do you remember the story about the rest in Virginia? About the-
That's another book.
No, that's, I think it's this one.
Was that in that book too?
I believe so.
Because that's the hot zone, isn't it, or something like that?
You may be right. You could be right.
I don't know.
I know she's an excellent writer.
Well, this was in ninety-five, when the book was written, so maybe that happened before. Anyway, for what it's worth.
Thank you, Doctor. I mean, very informative, and Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks for coming down, Dr. Isner. I'm fuzzy on the endpoint of this virus. It either kills humans, or, I don't understand what the or is. Does the virus actually disappear from your body? That doesn't sound right.
Sure, there are some viruses that don't. Let's use hepatitis B. In about ten percent of the people who come down with hepatitis B, the virus stays in the body, it's not contained, it's not killed, and then they continue to be infectious to others. But in ninety percent of the cases, in general, they actually cure themselves of the disease. Hepatitis C is one that does remain in most people's bodies, and is not cured without drugs being an intervention to help cure it. Most diseases, however, you do get over and you do develop immunity to it. So on the average of fifty percent of cases, would get over Ebola, they may have been caught a little bit earlier in the disease, their fluids, because they tend to lose fluids in diarrhea and vomit. If you can maintain fluid balance, they tend to have a better survival rate. If they survive, they'll have immunity to it. And that's what's indicated with those two young doctors who came over from Africa. If they give their serum, it has antibodies in it that you can give to another patient, and theoretically, and I believe this is what is happening, those antibodies will help fight the virus inside the new person's body and help to protect them. And then if they survive, they'll have antibodies of their own too. So no, that is true.
So to your knowledge, it doesn't go into remission, and you have Ebola carrying with you for the rest of your life?
Right. There is, as far as we know, no Ebola carrying state. There are diseases, hepatitis B, hepatitis C, tuberculosis, if it's not treated and your body doesn't fight it off effectively, you can have a sort of carrier state that will break out. Chickenpox has a carrier state, as anyone my age knows, and I've gotten the Zostavax for, because it can break out as herpes zoster later on in life. And so there are several diseases that do have, in some sense or another, a carrier state.
Well, it's been wonderful, and we appreciate your information. And for anybody who's listening that isn't here today, I'm sure through the Southern Nevada Health District, Dr. Isner's office, you can be updated.
Absolutely. The telephone number on the slides, the slide presentation is on our website if anyone wants to see it and linger on it. We do try to update it once a week with the changes in the figures, so anyone is welcome to it and to use it, as long as they take my name off of it, they can use it as they want.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your coming over to us.
Thank you very much. Anytime you want me, invite me back.
Thank you.
I'm your health department.
Let's hope you're coming here for good reasons, not because of diseases that are out there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And a lot of people watching this, because this is transmitted many times, will get information they wouldn't have otherwise, so that's good too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, Agenda Item Thirty-nine, discussion for possible action regarding the ratification of Timothy Hacker as Director of Parks and Recreation. That's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar plus benefits, general fund salary. And Ms. Fretwell, who is signaling to somebody in the back who might be-
The man of valor, I signaled to him to come down and join me at the podium.
And I must say, just while he's walking here, boy, that Mayor's Cup soccer tournament, the fields, every team, every coach that I spoke to, and I'm sure Councilman Coffin was there probably, and Mayor Brotem, unbelievable.
They did look good, didn't they?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's Larry Hogness and Daphne, I know too, but it's part of your team.
Right. It does take a team to get this stuff done, doesn't it?
I would just like to add, since I'm always questioning Parks and Rec, but I just wanted to say that was a big help with us with the Dexter, the way it was handled very, very well, bringing the public, the residents, and in the way it was handled, so that their opinions were down there. I thought it was excellent.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
So now you're not gonna get ratified, is that simple?
You all are aware that Tim Hacker has been working with us since May as the interim Director of Parks and Recreation, and really has taken control of that situation, handled the reorganization very effectively. We're seeing some significant improvements in morale and productivity in the department, and I'm really excited about the direction that things are going. Tim has well over twenty-five years of experience, working his way up through organizations, starting off in the planning field, all the way up to managing a medium-sized city in our own valley in recent years, managing very large budgets, ranging from ninety million all the way up to close to six hundred million dollars in budgets. He's got a great deal of experience, working in small communities where he was very hands-on, working with Parks and Recreation functions. He's managed significant park and recreation capital improvement programs, including a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of capital improvement programs for parks alone, while he was at the city of North Las Vegas. So he has a great deal of experience. But one of the things that made me feel that Tim was the right guy for this job is his approach. One, he wants to be a part of this team, and that's a really important thing. He likes innovation, and he likes innovative problem-solving and engagement from his staff. That's exactly what we're trying to inspire here through our values. That's the kind of person that we want to have on our executive team. He's also very partnership-oriented. You heard Lisa Mayo-Deriso this morning say that they've really enjoyed working with him. He reaches out to our stakeholders, he's a good communicator. I'd like to call him no-nonsense, as he communicates, which I think creates clarity. And that's one of the things that we've been working on in our organization, is to try and be clear in the way we communicate, and that we're open to listening. And that's another strength of Tim's. So I believe that Tim is a great addition to our executive team at the city of Las Vegas. I look forward- I look forward to seeing some different approaches to Parks and Recreation that I think will really embolden our efforts as we go forward. And I would appreciate the council's support in a ratification of Mr. Hacker this morning as the Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Las Vegas.
Before we pass your sentence on you, do you, maybe, do you want to make any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. And Council, I appreciate the opportunity just to stand up here. And Betsy's really done a good job of laying it out. It's a great team. When I first came in and was asked to come in to work on re-establishing Parks and Recreation, you know, my focus may have been someplace else, but very quickly, because of the innovation, because of the team-oriented, because of the emphasis on customer service and the fact that we have a great team, many of my team members are here with us today, in the support of a mayor and council means so much. So with that, I'd love to join a winning team.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, before I ask for a motion here? And going forward, we're going to continue to work on at least, I hope, recovery to fifty percent of the cost of operations?
Yes. Tim has a whole assortment of goals already on his plate. He's very well aware of them, including the policy adoption that the council took a year or so ago regarding cost recovery. And I do believe that that's going to take some work. We need to be smart about it. And so that's one of the things that's on his list, to make sure that we're fair, reasonable, and that we're meeting the demands of the community and that we're not pricing ourselves out of the market. So he's got a lot of work to do in that regard. But he knows that that is a high priority for us to continue to address and bring back regular reports to council regarding the implementation of that.
Thank you. Without further ado, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to ratify Timothy Hacker as Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. This motion, please vote and please post. Congratulations and good health. We look forward to it. We know you'll be great. Thanks, Tim. All right, Agenda Item Forty. Report Regarding the Status of Negotiations. Public Outreach for the Proposed Soccer Stadium in Downtown Las Vegas Located North of Bonneville Avenue, East of Grand Central Parkway, South of Ogden, Underpass from West of the Union Pacific Railroad. This is in Ward Five. Councilwoman Barlowson, good morning. Mr. Art again.
Good morning, Mayor, Members of the Council. For the record, Bill Art, Economic and Urban Development Director. This item is an update, and it is a report on the discussions we've been having, not only with our partner, our private partner, but also discussions with Major League Soccer. And so we're going to touch on both. It's a report only, so we're not asking you to take any specific action. Really going to cover four things. Talk about what's happening with the league, with Major League Soccer. Talk about how we're following your direction at October first City Council, where you directed us to work towards the elimination of public funding, which really is kind of a paradigm shift, if you will, in our business model. Talk about some new ideas we have on how we can use those recreational funds, the room tax dollars, in a different way that we think is going to have a bigger impact on the community, including our parks. Talk about our need for parking in Symphony Park, both for the existing facilities as well as new facilities, including the stadium. And then kind of outline next steps, where we're headed. So start off with the league. There's been a lot of media about what's been happening in the league and I think a little bit of confusion. So hopefully, I wanted to alleviate some of that confusion. There are kind of three bands of teams here, and I want to kind of walk you through it. The top band is a recent announcement where Chivas Team in Los Angeles Market has essentially changed ownership group to the Los Angeles Football Club. This is not an expansion of the league where they're adding an additional franchise. It's really substituting the existing franchise owner with a new franchise owner. So that really has no bearing or impact on what we're trying to do in our conversation with the league. The second band are teams that are being added to the league, where there are franchises that have been already awarded, both to Orlando and Atlanta. And then Miami is reserving, has been reserved a franchise for David Beckham and his ownership group. So what we're really at and we're at is this last expansion franchise, this twenty-fourth franchise team. And a number of cities have been announced publicly. We've been advised by our partner that predominantly three cities are having intensive conversations with the league. We're, of course, one of them. I've listed these in alphabetical order. We also think we're a favorite, but Las Vegas, Minneapolis, and Sacramento. And in fact, conversations are happening with Major League Soccer this month with all three of these cities, including Las Vegas. And our partner is scheduled to talk to the league on November twentieth. And so I know, Mayor, that you're going to be joining those conversations along with our city manager, Betsy Fretwell. So I wanted to frame this up in the sense that not only are we trying to figure out a business model that makes sense, but there is in fact a competition for this last franchise. And two other large cities, a minimum of two other cities are competing for this last spot. Business model updates, so following your direction, we really kind of are flipping the deal on its head, so to speak. Instead of it being a public stadium owned by the public, the City of Las Vegas, under a partnership agreement with a private partner, we're now talking about the stadium being owned privately. The reason for that is we've shifted a lot of the responsibility to the private side, to the developer. We've asked the developer to finance all the debt needed directly for the stadium and cover the financing costs. That's not to say that there's no public subsidy needed. Our partner's been very clear that some public support's needed. But what we're trying to do is to have the public sector support where we typically support. So what we're talking about is having the city directly support the project in offering the land, the site, in offering money for environmental remediation. We've done that for other projects in Symphony Park. And also support infrastructure costs, utilities, connecting utilities into the site, roads, street, public sewer. Those are the kinds of things that we typically do on public projects or large projects. We're also talking about some direct participation to make sure that the community has access to the stadium. If it were privately developed with a hundred percent funding, then it would be privately owned, privately managed, and the city wouldn't have any say in what events take place in the stadium. We want to have a say in those events. And then finally, in this private model, what we're thinking of is having TIF, Tax Increment Financing, or Tax Increment Revenues for the Redevelopment Agency, that are directly generated by the project, the stadium, given back to the developer to help support the funding costs. We've done that for other large projects downtown. We've done it for World Market Center, Molaski Corporate Center, the Las Vegas Premium Outlets, and the Alora Condominiums. We're also talking about that city bond that we had mentioned in October first, where we're looking at a forty-six million to fifty million dollar bond going directly into the stadium. We've taken a step back. We've heard from our constituents and a lot of stakeholders in the community. And we said, how can we make sure that we maintain our parks and address the needs that we have today for parks and not defer all those needs? And so working with Betsy, Jorge, and our executive team, we've looked at what parks could we address out of our park master plan with a majority of the funding from a city bond going to parks? And so these are parks that are in our master plan. Again, we're not asking you to approve these today or take action. This body, this city council, would certainly have the direct and final say on any money spent on parks. But this is an example of some parks projects that we have in our master plan. Craigan Park, doing some modernization work there. Las Vegas Wash Park, Harris Trailhead, and then a Gilmore Cliff Shadow Park. These are all parks in our master plan. But if you add all those parks up, that's over twenty-five million dollars in parks projects that we think there is need today to try to adjust those over the next few years through a bond issue. What that would mean is if we're able to generate a forty-six to fifty million dollar bond, that we would have twenty to twenty-five million dollars left over to potentially contribute to the stadium. And that money would be used to ensure public access, community access, access for events like a state high school football championship game, events like a parade, whether it be Veterans Day, Martin Luther King Day, access for other community events. There's also the potential to try to figure out, is there a partnership to be had with our university? They might have to be part of those community events. So a lot of discussions taking place, good, positive, productive discussions. But the thought here is that that bond, instead of paying for a lot of the hard costs of the stadium, we'd actually be prepaying a lease to have community access for the stadium. So it really becomes a private stadium where the city and the community, through this funding, has long-term community access over a twenty to thirty-year period. Public parking garage. One of the things that we recognize and we heard from all the meetings is not only access, 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 how do we get there? But once we get there, where do we park? And not only that, but if I go to park for the stadium event, is this going to negatively impact other properties in the meeting area? So we put our heads together, and the idea that we've come up with here is taking the Tourism Improvement District funds that we were proposing to be used for the stadium and instead pull that out of the stadium balance sheet, have no money go to the stadium, and instead use that money to build a public parking garage, a city-owned garage. It would be done somewhere in Symphony Park. It would not be done on the stadium site, but be in close proximity to the site. We'd have to get agreement from some of our other private partners, but we have a couple of sites identified. But this would be an easy walk to the front door of the stadium, but could help be a huge catalyst for new projects and expanded projects. Cleveland Clinic wants to expand. They need every bit of help they can get. They're a nonprofit. The Smith Center, as we know, has been an overwhelming success. And with success come visitors and patrons and vehicles. So they're excited about the possibility of a new parking garage to help support them. And so the thought is, we take the garage and guarantee a minimum number of event nights, and the number that we've been kicking around right now is ninety event nights, based on how many events we think at a minimum the stadium will have. And we'll allow the stadium to essentially control the use of the garage to make sure patrons of the stadium can use it on game day or event days, whether it's a soccer game or a concert. And then when the stadium's not being used, which would be daytime, could help support medical office for Cleveland Clinic, other evenings and weekends, which could support the Smith Center, this would be a new amenity to help drive development in Symphony Park. And any catalyst that we can have to help drive development just further Symphony Park and helps get these other large projects on the board and moving faster. Again, no TID funds would be used for the stadium. Happy to report that we've had some positive feedback from both Boyd Gaming as well as Forest City. There is a willingness to try to figure out a physical connection between the property controlled by Forest City, Parcels PQ, and the property owned by Boyd on the east side of the rail line. So that's going to help make sure that our hotel base in downtown and all our visitors that come for our wonderful amenities in the store portion of downtown can physically connect better to Symphony Park. And like to thank Boyd and Forest City for continuing to have dialogue with us about that critical need. So finally, next steps. There's a meeting in New York City with Major League Soccer that Finley-Cortis has been asked to speak with Major League Soccer. Again, they are having discussions with those other cities, so this is a very important and critical conversation. What would happen next is there's actually some technical changes we need to make in our existing agreement with Cortish-Finley, where there were two sets of competing dates. There's a date in our term sheet which said that we'd bring back a deal and a commitment for Major League Soccer by December seventeenth. And then in the agreement, the exclusive negotiation agreement, as amended by our addendum, it says December first. So there's an inconsistency in those dates. So we'd like to take back to a special council meeting to reconcile those two dates and have them both match to the seventeenth. We're still working aggressively to try to finish everything by the seventeenth and get done as much as we can by the seventeenth. And so we come back to you on the seventeenth with a form of an agreement, as well as an update on where Major League Soccer stands with awarding the franchise. And then finally, all of this is working backwards from having a stadium built and a team opening and first kickoff in the two thousand seventeen MLS season. So what that means is we'd really have to finish all the financing and start construction by summer fifteen to hit that date and make sure that the team is able to open and start. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Going to look to Betsy as well as Jorge to help me if you have any questions about the parks portion of this. But glad to give this report and answer any questions.
Okay, before I might go to council for any questions, if in fact December seventeenth becomes the point that we will be given the final agreement between the private-public partnership, is when will we have it in our hands ahead of time? We won't have it. You can't wait till the last minute. What are you looking at from staffing and the discussions to get it to us?
Well, Mayor, Betsy Fretwell, City Manager, what we're looking at right now is getting your feedback today about how we've altered the deal. It'd be ideal for us to go back out in a series of meetings, not necessarily a town hall format, but at least to some of these stakeholder groups that we've been in pretty regular communication with, and start talking to people specifically, like the Cleveland Clinic, the Smith Center, the Premium Outlet Malls, about the parking concept, for instance. We have not done that. Working specifically with the Public Works Department, the Planning Department, Parks and Recreation Department on compiling a bonding list for the bond that we've outlined here today. So there's quite a bit of work that needs to get done to be able to formulate a package that then we could bring to you. You know, ideally, it would be great if we had all of that put together by December one. I think that that's a little bit aggressive, given the fact that we've got a week, we'll basically lose two weeks because of holidays, and we won't have gotten any feedback from the league, possibly some on the twentieth. And I don't know how long it'll take them to make up their mind about whether or not we're their pick. So what I'd like to say is that we're going to do our level best to get something out in early December. But a lot of it depends on your feedback today and in the intervening weeks about if we're on the right track. Because it's hard to write an agreement without knowing we're on the right track. And so that's why we wanted to bring this level of detail here today. We can be much more specific in the coming weeks, either at the nineteenth or the first, or leading up to the first. And then hopefully be able to culminate with some sort of binding term sheet, maybe the beginning of a master development agreement on the seventeenth. I believe it would be unrealistic for us to think that we could put together all of the agreements with all of the changes that have been happening in the intervening weeks from your direction on October one, which, as Bill indicated, was a pretty significant departure from the original proposal that we had put before council for consideration. So I believe that we can get some very keen definition together for your consideration in December, either at the first or the seventeenth. And we're happy to do whatever public outreach you feel is necessary if we're on the right track.
Thank you. And again, I'm going to open in one more second, but really, Bill and Betsy together. Since we have been invited to participate in this competition and going to New York, what has the private partnership asked of the package that's going to be presented? I mean, I'm assuming that this competition, they've already, or some of the cities, I know that the commissioners had told me they had been actively in Sacramento. I'm sure they've been to Minneapolis. But the fact that they are now again interviewing, do we have a presentation? Or is that entirely the private partnership? What's the presentation that's going to happen next week?
The private partnership is putting together the presentation. So they're working on that. We have not seen it.
Mayor, I just add too, the private partnership is not only presenting kind of the deal in general terms, but they're also showing the league why Las Vegas is a good choice from the league's perspective. So the size of our market, the ability of. So the size of our market, the ability of our city to support the team, the intangibles with media, and so it's not just the financial deal, but it's really the business case for why not only a team would be successful here financially, but how does that help the league? How does it help the league's growth? How does it complement the league with what the league is trying to accomplish over the next several years?
Okay, thank you. I just didn't know if we were expected to come with something that we haven't voted on, you know, other than giving time. That's all we voted on November, was to work towards our goal.
Mayor.
I hear there, down there. Yes, sir.
Hi, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. Bill, I have to say, I'm impressed at what you folks have been doing, because it looks like you followed the guidance of council or the orders of council to get the public expense out of this stadium. It's going to take some scrutiny, of course, to see if we want to make sure that it passes that old test about, is this just new lipstick on the old pig? So I think that, I feel better about this, because it looks like it conforms to the motion that we, you know, we made. Of course, we haven't heard any discussion about additional investment by Cortish-Finley in the area, but that's, I'm sure that's to follow. So it looks like you found a way for the private sector to pay for a lot more, and it's not a halfway measure as we were being given. Every time we put up some resistance, then they would give a little. It looks like it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good change. Maybe, and I've been one of those most skeptical of this whole thing, and maybe it's going to win me over, but I still want to see, you know, through the analysis, an independent look to other people. I want to hear from others to see what goes on. I can't, I don't have the time to read it all like a scientific financial analyst, but I can kind of tell who's telling the truth or not. So thank you for doing this. It may still save the bacon of that group.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Bill, for the presentation. As you very well know, and as the community knows, that the council was heavily divided on how the deal structure and the term sheets were presented. And I truly believe that you and your entire team heard the message, went back, erased the term sheet, and started over with a sharper pencil to bring back something that would be plausible and possible for the council to consider. I truly believe that this is most definitely, from hearing from my colleagues, specifically those who were majorly concerned in relation to how much of the city's coffers we would input into the arena, or I'm sorry, stadium, that you heard it. And what I'm seeing right now is most definitely something that I didn't anticipate either. And so with that, I'm comfortable knowing that you and your entire team have brought back something that looks even more attractive, and hopefully this is something that not only the business community can put their arms around and support, but the community as well, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And the selection effort, just because I heard Lisa speak before, how were we, were these parks that are on this list, and granted, I know everything's still, everything's up in the air, were those parks that were already under, on your list for improvement, or are these new lists?
They're already on the capital list. You may remember, a couple of weeks ago, we gave a very lengthy presentation on a park condition assessment report.
Yes.
And the park master plan accomplishment report. How much of our city are we covering to ensure that people have access to parks? And so what we did is, after that presentation, we went back and pulled out areas in need of retrofits, like Cragan, that has not had any reinvestment, any significant reinvestment in a long time, and some parks that don't currently exist. There's not one city park west of 215 in the Lone Mountain area in the city of Las Vegas. So it's a huge gap. Along the Las Vegas Wash Trail in Ward 3, there are two parks envisioned in this list, completely underserved area. Could house things like soccer fields. In fact, there's some nonprofits that are interested in partnering with us in that regard, and so that could create even greater potential for stretching that investment out, for instance, if they became a partner we felt comfortable working with. So it's really up to the council. We threw these out based on that park's master plan and the needs assessment in the park's master plan for your consideration. This is not the final list. I mean, obviously, you all set those priorities. We just wanted to show what could be done with that room tax. You could potentially still have the stadium and have all of the, have these other major projects accomplished. You may consider other things. I mean, there's, we've sent you lists upon lists. I know Councilwoman gave me a hard time about how many memos I've sent out about all this, but, you know, there are museum projects that would qualify. There's other projects that may be of a higher priority to you than the ones we presented. But based on the conversation, we felt this was a potential project list that might meet some of the needs that have been identified in the community.
Okay, so it's a list, but it could be altered. The other question I wanted to couple with that, knowing, and I'm sure Councilman Ross, who isn't here today, Sky Canyon developing 1,600 acres out in the northwest. In their master plan, have parks included that they are taking care of? Now, as you're working to identify parks going forward, and with the developers that are working with the city, do you incorporate, even though they're private parks to the developer, do you incorporate those on the list and consider that as you're looking at parks list?
Yes, we include private parks.
Thank you. Any questions? Anybody else? Yes, Councilwoman?
I'd just like to say, Betsy, again, that, you know, you have to look at some of these older parks, too. You're talking, we put, we're going to put in $1.2 million in Dexter Park, and when Tim Hacker went out there, he found out, too, places, that park is over, I think it was built in 1963, it's over 51 years old. It hasn't had new asphalt or anything in 15 years. And on the sheet that was given to me, it said 15 years is what's expected, but I will tell you, that's not what's expected in the heat and what we've got here in our valley. When we had our meetings with Tim and the people spoke, and they said, well, nobody uses the tennis fields, how many people spoke up and said, I mean, excuse me, the tennis courts, how many people spoke up and said, the tennis courts, you haven't been able to use them for almost a decade? I'm just saying. We were talking about new parks, and we give the $1.2 million, which I'm very grateful that was in the budget, I appreciate it very much, but that can handle the fact of what we've got in some of our older parks. I imagine that Councilman Coffin and Councilman Barlow have the same situation, but I know in my park, when you're talking about parks that are 51 to 55 years of age, and they haven't had much happen to them as far as physical, new money for physical things, that's a big thing to consider, too. And of course, the other thing I mentioned to you, Betsy, is I still feel that you've done all the work and your staff in this. We, as Councilman Coffin said, we gave direction, we asked for something to be done to eliminate the use of public monies other than where we ordinarily use it. We do use it usually in getting new businesses and attracting, in infrastructure, and in land. We've done that. And that's a normal thing. But all the other, that would be not the usual thing, was what we were trying to get rid of. You've worked very hard in that. I haven't seen the other side do it. And as I said to you, what have they come up with? Where are these people that have all these, hundreds of people working for them? Where are they with their ideas on how they might be able to give more? How they might be able to take some of these people who show interest in helping build a stadium? That's what I would like to see. I'd like to see the other side come through. Right now, I see you and your staff working very, very hard to come up with ideas and how we might make it work, and I don't see anything from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else comment? And how do you respond? I mean, are they going to be able to respond? I mean, obviously, if you're working this back and forth, has there been give and movement on their part of, I know they've spoken with the names, but it's all a part of their private ownership. It doesn't do anything, it doesn't add more. It's a pie, and all the money's in that pie, and if they divide it five ways rather than two ways...
Right. Mayor, I'll take a stab at the question.
Because you talk with them.
Betsy may want to comment also. I think from the private side, what we see is the main give, if you will, is the credit risk and the money that they're putting up upfront. So this is a big move to take that star bond that was going to be a $22 million bond, 20 million plus in proceeds, that becomes zero for the stadium. We are going to give them use of the garage for the events, but that's not cash. We're not giving them cash. So that 20 million from a guarantee from the city perspective really does become zero. So that, for, and we are still working out the details, and we don't have a final package where everybody has signed off on all the details. But that give, if we do memorialize it in a term sheet and in an agreement, is significant. And so that is more risk on the private side. They are taking a lot more of the financial risk going into the deal. So that's what I see just on the negotiating table as the main give from the private side. I don't know if Betsy wants to react also.
I agree. Basically, what we've attempted to do, after hearing all the things that we heard out in the public, listening to all of you and your concerns, we have tried to move this arrangement into a traditional, or a more traditional redevelopment-type project, just like Councilwoman indicated, where we're investing in the ways we've typically invested, infrastructure, land, et cetera. Catalyst projects, like a garage, that have a greater community benefit than just for one developer. We feel like the way we've migrated this arrangement based on your direction gets us much closer to what we're used to seeing and what we're used to bringing to you. The remaining difference is that we would be taking advantage of this stadium as a park-like project, so that we have access for major community events, like Bill indicated. So that things like the Mayor Soccer Cup, maybe the championship game is held downtown in this field. So that at least creates the opportunity for the city to take advantage of what will, what would likely become a major community asset, although privately owned. So what we've tried to do is put as much of the risk of performance on the private developer. They are going at risk on all of the financing.
That's a huge piece.
Right. We would be going at risk on our park bond, but we would be getting five or six projects, or maybe more, out of this, not just a stadium. So it broadens the community impact, it broadens the community benefit from the leveraging of those funds way out into the community, whether you pick Gilmore Cliff Shadows in Ward 4, the trail parks in Ward 3, Cragan or Dexter, or any of the Ward 1 parks that, you know, the parking lots are crumbling, we can make that list work for you based on direction to really pursue the bond. So we've, and I will tell you that it's not without angst on the private developer's part about having to absorb this risk. And Councilwoman Beers and I have had several conversations about how do they monetize the revenues they were expecting us to monetize in the first proposal? And one of the things I've asked Bill to work on is, as we prepare for a final presentation to you of this agreement, if you will, there is a drastic difference from where we started to where we are today with this modified proposal. And it's very visible when you look at it in pie charts. And those are the kinds of things that I think kind of get lost on us as we move through this process, because it's been very iterative. We've been moving slowly down the field. But I think when you take a step back and we look at it as a community about where we started with a public facility, with all of the risk on the city, to now one that's a private facility with the lion's share of the risk on them for performance. So they get to, they get to eat what they kill, basically. If they have good events, then they get parking revenue. If they have a robust event pro forma, that's going to help them, because their tax increment financing is going to perform better for them. It becomes their risk, not ours. That is not an easy thing to deal with. So I believe that there's been immense movement in the deal, but I think because we've been looking at it in incremental steps, it's hard to recognize how much it shifted. And that's what we plan to present to you in December. But we needed to make sure that we were on the right track, or otherwise, we're spending a lot of time trying to figure it out, and that's not productive, because we have a lot of work to do. If this is something you're comfortable with as an approach, we have a lot of work to do in the next month and a half.
So, and also, in Councilwoman's question then, or statement, that it really does address the private sectors, what you've been doing in your conversations with them, they aren't coming to us, they're going, working through you and the team and the dialogue of having moved from where you were October 1 to this huge shift now their responsibility.
Yes, they have been working, they have been working through us, which is typical. It's just that this is an atypical project, because it's such a big project, and it's such, potentially a catalytic project, and because of the duration of this project. And, you know, I think they're trying to figure out, and I don't want to speak for them, but I feel like they're trying to figure out the mechanics of how can they make this new deal work for them? Can they deliver? And I, we want to know the answer to that, too, because we don't want to get into a deal that's not accomplishable, right? So it's a delicate balance, and that's what we're working through with them. That takes a lot of time for them to do in their own boardroom, not in yours, really. And we need to know, hear from you, are we on the right track? If this looks a lot better to you, if it feels a lot better to you, then we will continue to pursue this track to try and reach terms that are basically done from negotiations. They will be terms that we all agree to and we lock into. That's what we're heading towards for the December presentation.
Yes, and I think the accomplishment thus far is incredible, and I congratulate you on the efforts and the move and the ability to find ways to accomplish this. Yes, Councilman?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I want to, I don't want to smell a rat here, but I sense something going on here, and I want to make sure you know, and that's the council know, that while there might be some demonstrable progress or moving forward of parks in Ward 3, that's not going to make me move, that won't make my meter move at all, if in fact this thing doesn't stand up to scrutiny. It really, because why would we just give them parks earlier than they would eventually get them versus saddling them with burdens of debt and risk that they wouldn't want? So I want to make sure that this, it's understood. I don't care where you put these projects, I just want to make sure that it's park money that goes to that and not to build a stadium, and that's important. And, you know, just so you know, I'm not going to stand accused of supporting something because you put a few parks in my ward. That's the way this looks on the surface, and I know that it's a radical departure from the old plan, and for that I'm very grateful, because it gives me a chance to look at it closer. And I think, I feel a lot better about it. But that's where I stand on that, Mayor.
And I think that's, you know, do you want to address that? You know, as how, as you've been working towards this, this is needs that we have, and as you said, they're on the capital list and have been.
Well, and that's why we just put these on as potential park projects, because what we heard, what we heard from you and from some of the constituency, some who are sitting in the audience today, look, we need more parks. And so we're trying to adapt to that. And as I mentioned, we picked the projects in the underserved areas, because that was one of the questions that came on one of the earlier conversations. Now, you all can do with it what you would like. There may be something that you're thinking about that is a completely different project than the one that... than the one that's in the master plan, for instance. But we wanted to illustrate the impact of, instead of putting all $50 million worth, or $46 million or whatever we could generate on the sale of the room tax bonds into a stadium, how many other projects could you put in and still support the stadium to a degree that gives us access and community benefit for community events that you all have said are appealing for us to have in our community? Because they're not moneymakers. So in a private operation, they may not choose to have those events available. So it's sort of like a buy-in or a pre-lease, if you will, on the city's part to have access for those community events. I don't know if that helps Councilman Coffin, but that decision's y'all's, what projects would be funded through this mechanism should you go forward with it.
And to reiterate what you said up front early in the report, December 1 is a meeting date for us certain or no? Where, I mean, that, we need to make sure.
We are absolutely, we get it. We're trying to make sure that we hit that deadline. There's a deadline in the agreement that we're worried about. It's December 1 and it's on MLS. We need to take a look at that at a council level before, on or before December 1. So that's why we're trying to schedule a special meeting. It gives us an opportunity to go to New York, get feedback from the league, and then bring some proposed changes back to you for consideration to deal with that December 1 date. But that's our last and final chance to address that discrepancy between the term sheet and the addendum in the ENA as far as the deadline of December 17.
Okay, so that's a date certain, December 1. At what time? Do we have a time?
Beverly, have we landed on a time yet?
Two.
Yes, we have a tentative quorum for 1:00 p.m. 1:00 p.m. on the first.
Second question. In going to New York, and I know when we had those early meetings with the commissioners, we have always said, we're not building a stadium if there's no franchise.
And everything we have drafted says that.
Okay. So that if in fact, moving forward, I mean, obviously it could be voted down, but if it's voted affirmatively, yes, we'll move ahead for the stadium. And there's a delay on their part deciding which one of the three cities they're going to, and we lose out even though we voted affirmatively to build a stadium, that dies. Okay? Yes? Yes.
It's, if we, it doesn't matter who goes first. Both have to happen for us to start the project.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councilman?
Yes, Mayor. Just so that everyone knows, I'm trying to adjust my flight back from DC on the 17th. So until that happens, I may be in the air during the council meeting. But I'm trying to make adjustments accordingly so that if it all fails, I'm at least on the phone. But hopefully I will be able to get back in enough time by the afternoon to be a part of that conversation. So I'm not sure if we can, depending on how soon I can get back, if we can do a time certain for the late afternoon. But I'll work with the manager's office and the clerk with my travel schedule because I will be returning back from the East Coast.
We're happy to work with you on that to try and figure out the scheduling of all of this for that final item on the 17th, absolutely.
Right. And let me say something in regards to the parks while I have the liberty of the microphone. And that is, Betsy and Mr. Arnt, you most definitely have listened to the council. And I understand that you've listed these parks. I know that's one of the concerns of Councilman Coffin as well as Councilwoman Tarkanian in regards to the parks being listed. The parks that you listed were for examples as far as what we can do because the council will determine ultimately which parks receives what funding. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. And so moving forward, you know, I appreciate you showing that, but I just want to at least make sure that we're clear that it, those weren't necessarily the parks, but it can be other parks, whether it were in their ward or any other councilperson's ward on the days.
That's correct, Councilman. And our intent in presenting that information is really order of magnitude. So we wanted to show you, based on our current park master plan, if we took, if we did that split with a portion going for access to the stadium for community events and the majority of the money going to capital projects in our park master plan, what could we get done? And we realized these are tough decisions. It's a scarce resource and we have a lot of needs throughout the city, including our older parks. So really just wanted to kind of frame up the discussion, given that level of funding, here's what we could get done. It would certainly come back to you and the full council before we would spend any of those dollars.
And Betsy, you alluded to the impact of the structure that we're looking at now that we're trying to run down this track and how robust it will be moving forward for additional parks and how much more money we will receive versus what we currently have coming out of the room tax dollars that we're looking at utilizing. And I believe that's very significant to really highlight and publicize and really, if in fact this is the direction we're going and approve, then we really need to highlight how much more, how much more bang for our buck we're actually receiving because that's a very big highlight as it relates to how much more impactful we can be to the parks throughout the city of Las Vegas.
You're absolutely right, Councilman. In fact, Deputy Manager Sanchez was just mentioning to me that the other thing that we really haven't seen the impact of is the life cycle analysis that we're doing. Councilwoman brought up the fact that, you know, this parking lot hasn't been resurfaced in 15 years. Well, remember that we received somewhere around $6 million, a little bit more in room tax dollars annually. Around $3 million of that, we're programming into that life cycle replacement process, whether that's turf, supporting facilities like tot lots or parking lots. We've never done that before. So what we're basically recommending is that you keep that, half of that or nearly half of that room tax revenue that we're getting in operating capital so that we don't let the conditions of our older parks, like the ones that Councilwoman talked about, get into that state of disrepair first. And second, that you take the other half of that money and you bond it for park needs. Some of that may be rehabilitation because we need some that need to be overhauled. There are some that don't exist where there is zero service. A couple of those were on the list that we put out today. So you're absolutely right, Councilman, and I think that that's an important conversation. Should this be the direction that you want us to follow that we have with the community? I mean, I think Councilwoman's right on when we were talking with Mr. Hacker during his appointment. I believe his leadership in Parks and Recreation Department is going to help us engage citizens differently than we ever have in our park master planning process and in our parks' needs assessment. And I'm really excited about potential of that. And these resources then can be used to leverage and respond to those needs and those condition assessments more quickly than we've been able to in the past.
Right. And one thing that I have to give Councilwoman Tarkanian credit for, at the last meeting she mentioned about having toured all of her parks and identified areas of concern, which basically prompted my staff and I the following week to go out and tour all of the parks throughout Ward Five. And also, I went and took the liberty of touring all the parks in Ward Six, Ward Four, and Ward Two to look at the comparison. And with that, I have a laundry list of areas also of concern that I want to thank Councilwoman Tarkanian for bringing it to the attention because it's important. Because we don't realize how many parks we have in the city of Las Vegas and how pristine they are in certain areas and then, you know, in some of the more mature areas of the city. You know, there's some structural concerns that need to be brought up to speed. And so I'll be sharing that with your staff because I made a list of some key pocket parks, you know, in Ward Five that of course need, needing addressed, needing to be addressed. And Parks and Rec also is addressing one of the parks currently. And so with that, we need to keep an eye on them. But as a segue, is there an opportunity through these conversations to allocate a certain percentage of the monies for these older parks so that they don't run in competition with the bigger, more robust parks that we continue to build in the suburban areas that we have monies that we could pull from, just as we do, for example, in the RDA, to really put back into those older parks to keep them up to speed and new and fresh?
Councilman, you know, obviously the council has an opportunity every year during the budget cycle to prioritize projects such as the ones you've described. But I do think the change in the approach to use a portion of the room tax to reinvest in existing facilities to keep them up to par on a more regular basis, based on our asset condition assessment reports that are done twice a year. We're going to accomplish probably much of what you're suggesting using those funds that way. However, there are things that you're going to see that we may not see, that are important based on what you hear in the community that we may not hear for whatever reason. And so there's a lot of flexibility in that process. But obviously, if the council wanted to have a conversation, take up a conversation in your capital planning process about old versus new, we could take that up. I do believe the system we've designed is going to adequately address those changing conditions based on age and use effectively so that those discrepancies will become minimized over time. But just like Councilwoman said when we made this presentation, you mean we just started in July? And the answer was yes. So we've got four months of experience. Well, that's not a whole lot of experience to actually see how this will all play out. So I'm kind of asking for your indulgence. Let us try this process that we've put in place. Daphne, Larry, Jorge, Orlando have all worked very hard to design a process based on this condition assessment report, complaints and a variety of other things, to make sure that we're getting the money in the right places where the need is the greatest, based on those conditions. So that's, that would be my request, but obviously it's your decision and it's something we certainly take up as we move into the budgeting process.
Okay. So the group that you just mentioned, I would like to meet with that group so I can understand what that plan is.
We will brief that again because I know, Councilwoman, we've been, we've been trying to get with you and talk about that. And so maybe what we need to do, Orlando, is let's make sure that we brief that process again with Daphne and Larry. So you can see what's on the list, what we look for.
I'd love to see it in front of the public so they can see it, too, and just bring it. Because I'm sure whether you live in the suburban areas or in the heart of the city, everybody's interested.
Well, and we produce a report every six months, too, both on the capital project list and on the park assessment list. I mean, that's something we could easily put on your council agenda. It's a lot.
But I think it's worthwhile.
But we could do it and hit the highlights on a regular basis if that's something you're interested.
That's fine, but I still would like to have a sit-down with the team so that I can systematically walk through each point to see where the gaps are in Ward Five. Now, as a third segue, and Mayor, I'll be through with my comments for the time being. Going back to parking, because this is very key as it relates to the stadium conversation. How many parking structures does the city of Las Vegas own and operate today?
Councilman, I'm going to walk through them and then add them as I name them. We own the Ogden Garage, we own the Four Queens Garage, we own the Neapolis Garage, we own 500 Main Street. Those are the primary garages we own. We own, of course, the garage attached to this building and the Development Services Center. But the, and then City Center Garage as well. So detached from our office building, we own five garages.
What is the nature of those garages?
The nature is generally to support public parking in the area. With the exception of the two gaming garages, those go back quite a ways. Our participation in the Four Queens Garage and the Ogden Garage, which supports now the Downtown Grand, those garages are several decades old. But all the recent garages that we've built, the City Center Garage, even 500 Main Street, 500 Main Street, we intentionally built that garage detached from our building. So it's not only supporting City Hall, but future development around it. So our goal is, when we do garages, is to support future development. And in an urban setting, building large projects is difficult because of parking. You can't build a large project and then have acres and acres of parking lots like you do in the suburbs. So that really is the role of cities. That's why we have parking in economic and urban development. So it's really to support private development, promote development in a coordinated way. And it's working. It's working at City Center, it's working at 500 Main Street.
In Symphony Park today, how many developments and how many developments currently fall within a structural parking deficit?
Well, we have, we have the two in operation. We have the Smith Center and we have the Lou Ruvo Center. The Smith Center is, you know, we're parking predominantly through surface parking. They have a private garage there which accommodates part of their need. But the master plan for Symphony Park, I guess the best way to answer the question is, the master plan for Symphony Park depends on parking garages done in a coordinated way. Meaning each building isn't going to necessarily have its own garage. There's going to be large garages that help with the centralized parking systems so that if you're coming to the Cleveland Clinic or the Charlie Palmer or the Smith Center for a show, you may all park at the same garage, but it's going to service all those properties. And that's just the nature of urban development. We have to develop it that way.
Right. So that's something that we would do anyway in regards to supporting the parking needs of developments in Symphony Park, correct?
Correct. We would either do it directly ourselves or in partnership with a partner. So in any scenario, I think that kind of parking garage is going to be a public-private partnership. The private sector is not going to do it 100% on their own. And we're not going to build a garage just to build a garage. It's going to be in partnership with the private sector.
So the significance of the proposed parking structure to support not only the stadium but also for the surrounding developments will only bring forward an opportunity for those developments such as the Lou Ruvo, the Smith Performing Arts Center. The premium outlets for specifically during their holiday season, they're always looking for additional parking. And also World Market Center with the flow of their shows could all utilize the structure, the structured parking that you're proposing today, correct?
Absolutely, Councilman. And I think maybe I understated that in the presentation because
Yes, you did. That's why I brought it forward.
Having a 1,200 space parking garage, which is not only supporting the stadium, but the vast majority is going to support other things, is going to be a tremendous asset that we don't have today. Just to give you an example, Cleveland Clinic, their expansion over time, it's not going to happen tomorrow, next month, next year, we all hope it would, but it's going to take time. But their full master plan originally envisioned a million square feet of space, as many as 2,000 physicians employed and working in the area. So these are massive projects that we're undertaking and it requires public investment and us to invest in a smart way, invest in a centralized garage. So whether it's in conjunction with this project or in the future, we think a centralized garage is going to be, have to be a part of the solution for Symphony Park.
Yeah. And that's why I brought it forward because you were most definitely understating the significance of how impactful the parking structure would be for other off-site developments for their uses as well, which will help them build a bigger retail component on their footprint without having to do additional parking because they could utilize our parking. And we can also generate income from those parking uses as well, correct?
Correct. The way I think of it is, it's enabling those private projects to be more successful. Their, the medical office building will have a medical office footprint that, whereas if you put the garage on top of it, it doesn't work. And on through each And on through each type of use, the retail, the residential that we're hoping to get, the future hotels with Charlie Palmer and Forest City-
Correct.
-it all has to be done in a coordinated way. And it's something different than, I think, what our market's seen. More mature cities have developed this way for the last few decades. We haven't had a dire need to develop this way. We do now, and people are seeing the benefits of urban development. If you do it in a smart way, it can be successful. Even our neighbors to the west with the New Summerlin Project are starting to think this way. So the private sector is thinking this way, too. So we think this is an important piece. And again, I think you hit the nail on the head, Councilman. There's a big value add of having this extra asset, not just thinking about, well, how do we take care of the needs of the stadium and essentially punt on the needs of the rest of Symphony Park.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman?
Thanks, Your Honor. I guess I'll be the lone man out here today. You know, the furniture market was going to drive development, Cleveland Clinic was going to drive development, but Symphony Park, or I'm sorry, the Smith Center was going to drive development, and it's driven up debt. And we make pretty significant interest payments every month to fund that. I'm concerned that we're operating off a plan that was developed in a different economic And, you know, one of our anchors is the Cleveland Clinic, which was dropped onto that dirt before the Affordable Care Act, which has completely turned the entire delivery of medicine kind of upside down. I sure hope that when we get around to updating our master plan, we don't fall into these four- and five-year exclusive contracts with these developers. We need to have shorter timeframes on those agreements and get some action or move on to the next developer.
Yep.
Just one guy's opinion.
No, I think those are good points. I mean, obviously, we never saw the recession and how deep it took us. And I know the Cleveland Clinic, in the many times that Betsy, Bill, and I have been there, and they more often, the comment was, they expanded, they had plans for the different sites, but now things are beginning to change too there, so there are discussions. But I really think, and I know you've brought it up to us before, about, you know, the time, that, you know, you have the Charlie Palmer. But again, too, the recession was so heavily hit, but I think those words are really well-taken now that we seem to be doing this, and hopefully, there are no other huge recessions, crises. But those are points, and I know you want it as much. We all want to see it go and happen and be there and build this out. So it's a great report. Thank you very much. It's thorough, and we really appreciate the efforts you've put in. I know your phone calls and meetings go on forever, to say nothing of the regular work you do. So thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 41, Report Regarding the Status of the Five Strategic Planning Initiatives: Citywide Strategic Plan, Downtown Master Plan, Strong Cities, Strong Communities, SC2 Competition, Cashman Center Request for Proposal, and the Medical District Master Plan and Direct Staff on Creation and Form of a City Steering Committee. This is all wards, and good afternoon. No, good morning.
Real close. I think it's still good morning, Mayor and City Council. What I was wanting to do is give you a real-
You have to say who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Scott Adams, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you.
I wanted to give you a very quick profile of five major initiatives that are underway in terms of a quick profile of what they are, where we're at on those, and some of the interdependencies and coordination required to achieve each of those and get the most out of them. Because they're such major initiatives, we're really calling this Five Big Plans. And those five things are the Citywide Strategic Plan, the Downtown Plan, the SC2 Competition, the Cashman Request for Proposal Process, and the Medical District Master Plan. And I'll jump right into those. In the Citywide Strategic Plan, I know we've presented this to you previously at a previous council meeting. It focuses on four strategic priorities that you adopted in your city council workshops this past spring of economic opportunities, public safety, transportation, and education. And what I'm going to do is kind of walk you through the committees that we're setting up as we speak. We committed to reach out and engage stakeholders in each of these four strategic priorities, citizens and others that have an interest in each of those areas. So the schedule that we're going to be following with these committees, we've already developed the lists and developed some overviews of the process, briefed you on this previously. We are, as we speak, inviting each of these persons to serve on these committees, and then over the next year, we'll hold public meetings with the committees to really delve into the details of each of these initiatives. And then our hope is, at the end of next year, sometime in the fall, we'll report to you the results of their work to consolidate into a Citywide Strategic Plan. We've invited a number of representatives in the area of economic opportunities. Our Economic and Urban Development Department is in the lead on this initiative. This is representative of the organizations that have been asked to participate in the process. A lot of the people that we've asked on this one were engaged previously when we developed the Citywide Economic Development Strategy. So we're asking some of those same folks to come back to the table again and go to the next steps in that process with adding a few more. And I should say, as I go through these, we're in the midst of asking people to serve, so that if you have any more ideas for those citizens or stakeholders that need to be on them, please let us know, and we'd be glad to invite them. In the area of public safety, our focus is going to be on homelessness and also downtown public safety. Those have been big issues that have really faced us as we try to bring downtown to the next level. Our Community Services Department is in the lead on this. As you can see, we've got a big profile of public safety providers, community service providers, groups that are impacted by homelessness, and we actually have, I think, one or two homeless individuals themselves that we're asking to serve as stakeholders on this group as well. In the area of transportation, Public Works is leading this initiative. And again, we've got another good profile. This really is representative of a lot of the transportation providers and planners and catalysts in the community, a lot of the real estate development community that are beholding to good transportation systems. So we've got another excellent cross-section of citizens and stakeholders engaged in this. In the area of education, as you know, education is not something that cities typically engage in, but we're not your typical city. And we have been very engaged in a number of educational initiatives, and so we're asking a lot of those folks that we've been working with through the last couple of years to come together and work with us on identifying what we can do further in the area of education. Again, Community Services Department is taking the lead on this initiative. Moving to the Downtown Plan, there's really three elements to this Downtown Plan. First, it's an opportunistic master plan, it's a transportation plan, and it will do the details of planning a business improvement district. Let me just touch on the term opportunistic master plan. I think a lot of you have questioned, how is this different than the Centennial Plan? The Centennial Plan that we already have and we're actually updating as part of this process has been a regulatory framework for, you know, setting the limits on buildings and a regulatory framework for development going forward. What this seeks to do is using the term "bend the trend line" for what we're trying to accomplish downtown. If we did nothing over the next five or 10 years, you would see straight-line growth occur in our downtown area. But what we're trying to do in this plan is bring public and private stakeholders together to identify those public and private actions that are needed to bend that trend line, to make things happen downtown that otherwise wouldn't happen if you just kind of let things go as they would normally go. And we've got about a year-long process that we're going to be moving through. We kicked off, we've hired the consultant, we've kicked off the effort, actually, it was about two weeks ago. And then over the next year, we're going to be developing the plan with the consultants and doing a lot of stakeholder outreach. I think one of the most important things you can do in a Downtown Master Plan is engage your stakeholders. The process is almost as important as the outcomes, because you've got to have an engaged community to embrace that plan and ensure that that plan gets carried out once it's complete. And so over that next year, we're going to be researching some of the opportunities and constraints to downtown development, developing a vision plan, developing alternative concepts. We'll narrow those down into a preferred concept, and then our hope is, in January, February of '16, bringing a final master plan to you for adoption and approval. This is a map that shows the existing Centennial Plan boundary. Each of those areas in color represent a district that is in our current Centennial Plan. There's a couple of those that are in the Centennial Plan update as it's moving forward. For example, you'll see the Medical District in that, you'll see areas sort of southeast part of downtown, neighborhoods adjacent to downtown. And then we've got some boundaries there, you see in red and blue. And our consultant has been asked to look at that broader, greater downtown area as the area that they need to look at as they develop the master plan. We're not looking at just the Centennial Plan boundary, but we're looking at how that area can grow, and then how does it impact those areas that embrace or are adjacent to downtown? And are there some areas that we need to bring into downtown as we, again, we're visioning 20 years out in the future here. This isn't the way downtown should be today or in the next five years, but long-range vision for where we're heading with our downtown. The next major initiative is the SC2 Competition. If remember, we've applied to the Economic Development Administration, received a million dollars in grant funds to conduct a cash prize competition to stimulate ideas that would generate jobs and economic development, with the final grand prize being a half-million dollars. I think we've reported to you in the past that we've had over 200 registrants in that process. They form teams. We've got two Blue Ribbon Committees that are reviewing those. They've reviewed the proposal that we've received at the end of the deadline, and they'll be reviewing the finalists later. But we received a total and pushed through the process of 17 proposals, and in parentheses there, that shows the proposals received around each of the subject areas of the competition. So we received nine for Cashman Center. Unbelievably, we didn't get any for the Medical District, and we got two for business parks and six for other project initiatives within the RDA. The schedule for the SC2 Competition, the proposal deadline was on September 22. The judges finished their scoring of those proposals on October 30, and we'll be bringing to you on November 19, the finalists as a result of that scoring. Those finalists then will move on in the competition, will develop their final proposals. They'll be reviewed by another committee and then recommend to you in May of next year, for hopefully approval in June, the winners of the competition based on their final proposals that they'll be developing over that period of time. The Cashman RFP is another initiative. This is one that we've been working on for quite some time. Years ago, we entered into a memorandum of understanding with the LVCVA to cooperatively seek the redevelopment of the Cashman Center site. As you know, it's over 50 acres, includes the stadium and convention center and all the surrounding parking. I should have changed from May to, we did add other city-owned property into the RFP process. We've added Reed Whipple, so you can respond to the RFP for all of it, or just Reed Whipple if you'd like. And we've also looked at the Natural History Museum site in terms of adding it in. If you look at the scale of the offering in this RFP, it's bigger than Symphony Park. When you add in those two other properties, we're pushing 70 acres, and as you know, Symphony Park is 61 acres. So the scale of what we're looking at in terms of proposals for redevelopment rival what we could see at Symphony Park. We're offering in the RFP the opportunity for submitting for the entire property with or without the 51s. I think what we're saying in the RFP is that if you do address all of the property and need to use the stadium site for other than a stadium, you need to address how to relocate the 51s. And so it's a little bit complicated RFP, but I think what it affords us as a city, when you look at the SC2 Competition, you look at the opportunity to submit on the Reed Whipple property and a greater Cashman Center site, we can now look at all the interests simultaneously in the Cashman Center and surrounding area and start to make some decisions about which of those proposals makes sense to move forward with as a city. The schedule on that is the release, and I have to correct an error. I stated in a briefing yesterday, I said it was out on the 3rd. It's actually out today. Anybody interested in the RFP can go online in the DemandStar system, register for the RFP, and get plugged into the system to respond to that RFP, starting today. There will be a pre-proposal conference and site tour on December 2. We'll answer any RFP questions on the 8th, and then the proposers can be off and running during that process with proposals due on February 2. We have also invited all of the respondents who responded to the SC2 Competition to submit under the RFP for Cashman Center, so that there's coordination between what's going on at SC2 in terms of proposals under that process with the RFP process. And this is a map showing that property. Everything in light blue is the property that's owned by the LVCVA, that includes the baseball stadium, the Cashman Center Convention Center, and the surrounding parking. There's adjacent to that the Natural History Museum property that's included in it. And then across the street, you'll see Reed Whipple, future cultural facility. That property has also been included in the RFP process for consideration. So it's a very large property, and it potentially straddles the Boulevard. So it really gives a developer that's interested in scale the opportunity to have Boulevard exposure on both sides of the Boulevard, should they choose to propose that in their offering. Yes?
May I ask a question? Thank you. In that area, south of the, what is delineated as the Maryland-Las Vegas Boulevard connector, and then to the east of the Neon Museum and Park, the green shading, you've got these residential areas. Do we, I know they're very old. I'm sorry, is that built more or-
Yeah, the core of that is primarily built more.
Do we know how many of those properties are investor-owned and rental units, for example, versus residential as owned by an-
I couldn't answer that question off the bat. We could certainly look into that to see. That would be fairly easy task to determine how much of those are owner-occupied versus investor-occupied units.
Yes, because I'm not sure if those have been purchased in speculative ventures. I'm thinking between Wilson and that street, too, the others. Oh, well, I guess you could think about Bonanza, too, if you want, and just say, well, is that the kind of land that you can expand, you know?
Yeah.
We don't want to condemn anybody's home at all. But the thought is, maybe those are residential owned by people who, you know, rent them out, and maybe they'd be interested in consolidation.
Clearly, that area is going to be heavily influenced by what happens at Cashman, what happens with those properties along the Boulevard, the library, Reed Whipple, which will be a former museum, the Natural History Museum site, and then the commercial corridor frontage along the Boulevard. So Cashman has long been the driver of, conceptually, what happens along that corridor.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, has anybody from the Cashman field been included in the conversation, or is it too premature? I mean, because it's the Cashman complex, which was really initiated by the most senior of the Cashmans, and certainly, they must have some type of dream of what they would see it to be. Have we included them?
I'm not aware that we have up to this point, but it's certainly something that we could look into and at least get their thoughts on where they see the future of the site.
Okay.
And then the Medical District Master Plan. This one is touching on- This one is touching on one of our major economic development priorities of the city. If you remember, in the citywide economic development strategy, the medical school in the medical district was one of the top priorities. So, the focus of a medical district master plan is to identify the medical school location and how it can build out over time, major institutional expansion in the area of System of Higher Education, Valley Hospital, UMC, maybe medical office buildings, other major facilities, and then, developing the campus so that the campus can be friendly to visitors, patients, employees, and really become a major academic-focused medical district in the community.
Did anyone, if I might, Mr. Adams, get back to you to say why, when we were talking to these RFPs for considering development, why they stayed away from that?
It... I did have a chance to talk to one or two. I think they found it very difficult. I think the thing that probably was most difficult was the fact of, it's really going to be heavily influenced by medical school development. And I don't know that they saw that as something they, as entrepreneurs, in a competition of that nature, could terribly influence, like, for example, you could at Cashman and other areas. But it... I really don't have a great explanation for that, because I knew there were several that had looked at it, and I thought were planning to do it, and I'm not really, really understanding fully why they dropped out.
Because it's got such a huge momentum now, and keeping... I'm going to sneeze. That's two, so three will come. I know the conversations out there on the location, and it's so... I mean, having been part of the conversations, it's so right in the district that has been scrutinized and is looked at by Councilwoman and your team, and Betsy and everybody.
One of the things that... Where this is important is, there's been some concern that the existing, the core older portion of the medical district is not large enough to accommodate a long-term build-out of a medical school and all the attendant facilities that would form an academic medical campus. But the thing we learned when we interviewed consultants who have experience in medical districts around the country, they overlaid our medical district on some of the greatest medical centers in America. We're about the same size land area as the Texas Medical Center, Johns Hopkins. You know, they looked at all these great medical campuses, and we're the same size. And they said, you have plenty of room to build out an academic medical campus. You're just not going to be able to go out like you have been historically. You're going to have to go up and densify the center. So, planning that densification is going to be very important so that we understand where it can go, that it respects the edges of the campus, so that the single-family neighborhoods aren't threatened by that expansion, and really understand the connections between the medical school, the teaching hospitals, and all the other facilities. So, that's what we're trying to get done.
And it's so very important, because when you travel to some of these other centers, that is very, very true, especially if they aren't long-established. And so, looking at the quality of the land and looking at what's been going on in that neighborhood for so long, it has the greatest potential for really affecting the residents around, because it is a high-quality, safe, intensely... What do you call it? Public movement. A lot of people moving all the time, which creates a synergy of great safety among other things. So, it just, to me, having looked at it and talked and spoken at great length with the Councilwoman on this, and knowing too, that there are other groups of people and developers that are considering other sites, no point in going into them, but this seems to be just such the right and ripe time because of what's already there.
Right. Let me move to the schedule on this process. We've selected the consultant...
Excuse me, I just wanted to say that in one meeting I attended recently, where I was also told that the consultants who know about the size of other medical districts have said we are well within the amount of acres to have it. We have 160 acres there, and 120 are in flat parking.
Parking lots.
And when I say... I'm not talking about acres with buildings on them already. I'm talking about acres that we could use. But anyway, 120 is in flat parking. All we have to do is go up, and it gives us a whole lot more. And even so, with the health district moving, leaving that 10 acres there, and Betsy says we're in the midst of an MOU agreement now with the county, and the county's supporting that, that gives us an additional 10 acres for the School of Medicine. But it's too bad individuals didn't know that. I think it's very important to know, when you drive by it, you don't realize the depth that it has and the width that it has behind what you see in Charleston.
That is correct. So, we've hired... We're in the process of hiring the consultant. We'll be bringing that contract to you very shortly. And then, one of the things that we're going to do is work with that consultant to very quickly get into the medical school planning as one of the first tasks in that process. And the important point of that is to have that figured out early on, so that we can have that as part of the system of higher education's request in the legislative process during the legislative session.
And it's my understanding that that's the push from the university, to place it there, because they have the School of Dental for Dennis, and they have the nurses thing already there. And it's critical that, for us economically in the city, and it's critical for them to be able to do it all in one place and be able to move accordingly.
There is an incredible interconnectivity between a medical school, teaching hospitals, and clinics. And I can't imagine, quite frankly, any other location that it would belong in. Because if you did, you'd lose that interconnection. You'd lose the investment that you've already made in the things that you just described. And so, I think part of what we're doing here is to show that it'll fit, that it has long-term build-out potential, and that there is that interconnectivity with all those things that are already there.
And ways to get added public transportation that are already in place, so you can get students and physicians and nursing and everybody else, teachers, to that site.
Mayor?
I just wanted to add one thing, if I could, please. And also, so close to the Ruvo Center, that as I spoke with Larry Ruvo a couple of days ago, a shuttle between there, similar to what they use at UCLA, is so possible and so easy to do. We're less than a mile, really, from there.
Yes. Mayor, if you will. You mentioned that you didn't possibly see it going anywhere else. In the event that we don't move forward with the stadium, I mean, Symphony Park also would be a great location for the medical school as well, being that we have the La Ruvo as well as Centra moving in. So, there's a blank canvas as well as an option too.
It could. And in fact, when I get done with the schedule, I've got a map showing what we're looking at as the planning area for the medical district. And we're looking at the existing coronary that we've long described as the medical district, but now, we're looking at going out Charleston as a medical corridor, up MLK, and then, bridging over into Symphony Park.
And what that does not have is two hospitals. Hospitals who are already taking interns and residents.
Two teaching residency programs.
You don't have that in Symphony Park, but to have it as a connection to where those hospitals are, it just makes an absolutely excellent thing. But you don't... And I don't think we're going to build two hospitals in Symphony Park.
Well, I mean, but there's still an option, being that there is connectability, and it does fall within the medical district as far as the boundaries.
Absolutely.
Is that true?
It does. In terms of the planning boundary that we're looking at, in terms of its future build-out.
Right. But, I mean, the best of both worlds would be to basically have the medical district, or I should say, the medical hospital in the proposed location, near Valley and UMC, and the stadium there to basically have a more robust, you know, development in that entire area that needs development, correct?
Yes. One of the most important concepts in an academic medical district is keeping the research, the clinical, and the teaching functions together as close as possible. You have doctors, they call them super docs, that they do research, they teach, and they have their own clinical practice. And they're not interested in driving all over the metro area to do those things. They want to be as close together as they possibly can. So, I would see that having some of that in Symphony Park, and some of that in the existing medical district, and some of that along that corridor out Charleston, it's a close enough proximity to create that synergy.
It's all close enough.
It wouldn't happen if it was way out somewhere else, where you've got to jump in a car, and it takes 20 or 30 minutes to make that drive to make those things happen.
Because I know UNLV is also looking at Symphony Park as well. I mean, I understand that they have their site set in the existing medical district, but they also are looking at, you know, expanding options, which they've looked at Symphony Park as well. And so, you know, I just want to keep our options open in the event that, you know, we have the available space to house the medical school there if possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
There... You know, we're going through a schedule here. Again, like I said, we hope to have that peeled out early, but then, the goal is concurrently with this, we're working on a marketing plan for the district. We're looking at adding the medical district to an expansion of the redevelopment area to give it more development tools. We're looking further at incentives for the medical district. And then, the goal on this would be an opening of a new medical school somewhere a couple years out, once that gets up and running. And that's... That is our goal here, is to get that medical school grounded in the district and get it open. This is the map that I've talked about. You've seen this map before. This is that planning boundary that we've talked about, where in the gold at the center is the original medical district, which has Alta in the north, Charleston in the south, Rancho on the west, and the interstate on the east. But the blue takes it out, the corridor of Charleston, and then, as you go up MLK, you see it picking up some of that and then, going over into Symphony Park. The idea here is that that's all property that has medical use now, that has potential for expansion as we go forward, and we continue to build a great academic medical district. And what I wanted to show here was overlaid all these initiatives...
Mayor, real quick, if we can go back to that overhead. And in regards to the medical school, are we talking housing as well?
Absolutely.
How much housing are we talking about?
That'll be hard to say, but typically, you would have housing for some faculty, a lot of the students. You might even have temporary housing for families of patients. I know a number of medical districts have long-term stay hotels. So, you know, you could be looking at initially a couple hundred units, but over time, it could get into the thousands.
Would that help Newland at all in regards to their residential piece?
It absolutely could. I mean, that would be a driver of demand. It would be a driver of demand to live close. I mean, obviously, if you get back to those doctors that I talked about, and the clinical faculty and practice personnel who need to be close to the district because they're on call, or whatever it happens to be, having good, high-quality housing nearby is going to be very important.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's another thing that was looked at at one of our meetings that we had on the medical district, that the Meadows Mall is in trouble because of the downtown Summerlin Mall, and that is being and has been in the past discussed for mixed housing there. So, and that's very close to the medical district.
I think our next presentation's going to probably get into some of this stuff, because they'll be talking a little bit more detail about some of the things. Planning concepts will be the kind of the forerunners of the medical district plan, and in particular, creating a little district within the medical district with retail that serves the entire medical district. That's going to be another important thing as well. So, when you overlay all these initiatives, we... I'm showing a schedule here that's by quarter over the next year. It shows there's a lot of things that are going to be happening simultaneously. There's a lot of interconnection. So, it's going to be very important that we coordinate all five of these initiatives, that we coordinate the outreach, we coordinate the outcomes, and we coordinate the interdependencies. And so, to that end, we formed an internal coordination team of city staff with representatives that are the owners of each of these initiatives. We're meeting monthly, and we're focusing on coordination of outreach and outcomes. The other thing we're going to be looking at is trying to form a war room somewhere that's public, maybe in City Hall, maybe somewhere downtown, where the public and city staff can go to and view the progress of these initiatives. So, we'll have vignettes of all the different plans and alternatives and things up on the wall. We get a lot of the public meetings, and it becomes the place to go for information about all these things. It leads to a basic question that we ask of you, is do we need a steering committee of citizens for these five efforts? You know, we've got five major things that's going to impact the future of the city. Do you envision having another citizens committee coordinating these five things? We heard from Henry Cisneros back in the workshop this spring, that a way to get things done in a community is bring your civic leadership into the process, engage them in that process, and they don't let go, and they will follow that process through until those things get done. So, the idea of a steering committee is to really coordinate these things, get engaged in these things, and then, hopefully, never let go. So, we need some feedback from you on whether that's something you think is important in the process going forward.
And I might just add, this is Betsy over here, that one of my personal goals this year that I shared with you in my performance evaluation was to really enhance some communication and outreach. And in some of my early meetings with community participants and leaders, I explained that we have these five big plans going on. And one of their recommendations is trying to create some connectivity between all of them through something like a steering committee they felt will be very helpful. And they felt it would be important to create better communication, coordination, and understanding among all five activities. So, I committed to them that I would bring that idea back to you. So, that's why we're teeing that up today. And let me say this, we don't have to overcomplicate things. We don't have to make it a city council-appointed steering committee and make it bigger than it has to be. I mean, I'm happy to assemble a bunch of people that are involved in all these efforts and employ them that way, and report back to you on a regular basis what we're hearing from all of these activities. Or, if you want it to be formal, we can certainly bring another, put an agenda item on and bring back a list of potential participants and have you all create a committee to do just this. So, the door is wide open, and obviously, you can stay status quo, and we'll continue to use these forums and others to keep the community updated and to continue to coordinate activities among all the various components. So, we just wanted to toss it up for your consideration today and to get some direction from you, and then, we can move on.
Did I call you Mary? I'm afraid it's a habit.
You've called me a lot of things, so Mary will do.
Well, it's just like, those who run my life usually, their names start with M. We have Southern Nevada Strong, which is under the aegis of the Regional Planning Coalition, but in fact, now, staffing is transferred to the Regional Transportation Committee, not because they're taking control and it is transportation issues only, but rather because they had the personnel. So, they have some of the same goals or similar goals. They also have a citizens committee. It's not the biggest in the world, but it is one that's already been forming and working. And their task groups, which were very, very large citizen committees, they, I think, have dissolved, and they've put their input into the plans so far on Southern Nevada Strong. So, my thought is, you might want to consider that as a source of people power for a group of folks who are energized, who also have had some experience in thinking these things through for the last year. And, you know, give it a thought. That might be someplace where we can use talent that's been created through necessity and still available. So, just a point.
Madam Mayor, if I guess my...
Please.
If you wanted opinions, is...
Betsy said, I believe in the discussion with our groups... Betsy said, um, I believe in the discussion with our groups, they sort of liked the idea of not having some major super majority group that couldn't, wouldn't know all the details that they know, uh, involved in, you know, telling them what to do. And I think if you look at our school district, Sandra Tiffany may have been very correct years ago when she said divide that district. And at the time, I didn't think she was right. But if you look at the problems we're having now, and some of those problems are because the people at the top can't keep track of all the other little things that are happening from the gut level up. And that's what happens sometimes when you put a super committee in charge of the working committee. So that would be my feeling.
That's important. It is, you get lots of, you know, you get lots of input in those things.
By the way, I'm not against citizens on the committee. I think that's a fine thing. We're trying to do it. I'm just talking about the super authority.
Councilmember Beers?
I agree with Councilwoman Tarkanian.
What was that?
Said, "I agree with Councilwoman Tarkanian."
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, please continue.
That's the end of my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, it's wonderful. It's exciting. Yeah, really, thank you. Great job, keep working on it. It's exciting and, um, hopefully as we move forward, we're going to see a lot of things. But I think the location of, of the, the medical district and the strength of that, you can't have a quality city without quality medicine. And it needs to be accessible and accessible immediately. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, the other thing it does, it gives the public an opportunity to view where we think we're going to go and what we think we'll be able to do. And I think that's very important so they can see that we do have a vision and that we have vitality behind the vision and all of this.
Thank you. Okay. I turned off the mic. We are now, thank you again, Mr. Adams. And that was no motion required. We are into planning and report for, uh, report for possible action regarding the Las Vegas Medical District Opportunity Site Investment Strategy. Mr. Parago.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tom Parago, Acting Planning Director. I'm excited to be here to sort of have the second, uh, presentation on the medical district and the work of Southern Nevada Strong. With me is Stephanie Garcia Vossi. She is the Community Development Director for City of Henderson and the Project Director for Southern Nevada Strong. So we're going to sort of tag team this. We're going to, Stephanie's going to kick us off.
Okay. For the record, Stephanie Garcia Voss, City of Henderson, and thank you so much. We're thrilled to be here. We're here as a result of a regional planning effort like no other in Southern Nevada. This is the result of a three and a half million dollar investment by HUD, the Department of EPA and Endo, and Department of Transportation, not Endo, Department of Transportation, and then another one and a half million dollar match in this community. So we've never seen a regional planning effort like this in the valley. And it's working to connect jobs, housing, and transportation. And when we think of strong competitive regions in the West, regions that have diversified economies, are able to attract a millennial workforce, see strong investments in transportation, they all have one thing in common. They all started with a regional plan that identified regional priorities. And why this is so important to us is because we have not been able to compete for certain federal resources to bring them back to Southern Nevada simply because we didn't have a regional plan. So this plan prioritizes each of our downtowns, but then took things one step further and identified four opportunity sites in Southern Nevada that needed further investigation and that really have some significance in terms of identifying replicable strategies or have really distinct qualities in each of them that are important for us as a region. They were downtown North Las Vegas, the medical district in Las Vegas, the Maryland Parkway Corridor, and the Boulder Highway Gibson and Broadbent, Broadbent Site. And we're going to go into a little bit of more detail on the medical district, but I do want to say, um, thank you to Councilman Coffin, who was chair of the SNRPC when we started this process, Councilman Barlow, who sits on our consortium committee, Councilman Beers, who's also on SNRPC, Councilman Tarkanian, who's been a champion of this project, and also Orlando Sanchez, who has served on our consortium committee as, um, vice chairman. We really appreciate all the support that the City of Las Vegas has given to this project. So with that, this boundary probably looks very familiar. It's great that we're following Scott Adams, so I won't spend much time on it, but this was the boundary of the study area. Then just to touch on why this site was selected, we heard from the community outreach where we went out and talked to people, this was actually ranked number two of 12 potential opportunity sites because it was recognized as having such a significant importance in the region. Uh, it's even called, been called the heart of the region because of the medical services that exist here. It really has the opportunity to meet the demands for housing in the downtown area. It has great connection with transit and just the opportunity for, to provide that medical use for the entire region. Going into the regional importance of this area, Scott touched on the economic impact and the sort of comparisons with other regions in the, in the country. For example, uh, in some of your plans, it calls out that the Texas Medical District actually has a $10 billion economic impact in the region. And in particular, the Las Vegas Medical District not only being the heart of the region, but it also has the only Level One Trauma Center in all of Nevada. And we are underserved, we're critically underserved by medical professionals in, in Southern Nevada. We have 67% of what national standards are in terms of, uh, investment in medical professions. And then we're also building on previous work, uh, just as the previous presentation talked about. There's the Las Vegas Medical District Advisory Council, the City of Las Vegas Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. Their number one goal, your number one goal, was to expand and strengthen the Las Vegas Medical District. So it's right in alignment. There's so much work already being done here. I'm not going to go into any more detail because you heard quite a bit of that. But there's certain opportunities and barriers in this area. Councilwoman Tarkanian talked about how there is a significant amount of land in this area. Las Vegas, Clark County, the Nevada System of Higher Education all have land in this area. But when you think of potentially 160 developable acres and 120 of them being used for parking, that really shows the opportunity that exists in this heart of the region. And then it's, it's very centrally located. It also aligns with the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance's SEDs, so that's incredibly important. But then there are also some barriers, barriers that Scott touched on. There's fragmented land use patterns. There's some work that needs to be done with the existing residential development, who's going to be wondering about the impacts of greater-than-one-story buildings in the area. And then there's really a lack of supporting uses and amenities in the area. The area needs retail, the area needs access to fresh foods, open space and parks, those types of things, those types of amenities to really truly make it a thriving medical district where people want to live and spend, spend their time. This is a snapshot of the 2000, uh, the workshop that we did in, uh, 2000, in May. And, uh, we were able to come out and ask residents and any stakeholders, you know, what they thought the medical district would be great, how it would be great, when would it be great. And we heard things like, uh, we want access to parks, grocery stores, movie theaters, better cell service. We even heard from someone who was wheelchair-bound that, you know, the medical district would be successful when he could navigate on the sidewalk safely and not have the interference of light poles. So we did quite a bit of extensive outreach from open houses, stakeholder meetings, a MetroQuest online survey, iPad surveys. We also did ethnographic research where UNLV students went out and spent a couple of weeks talking to people on the street, just approaching them to find out what their thoughts and concerns were. And this map really highlights, um, you could see the green. People who responded to the survey and put green dots in those areas said that's where they wanted to see more parks or open space opportunities. The blue, shout out for, um, community service, uh, opportunities. The orange are highlighting transportation projects, whether that might be shelters or bike trails or, um, better, better walkways. And then there were concerns with access that are red. And the two reds are safety concerns and access, and you can see those, um, throughout that region. But people wanted to see mixed-use development, um, higher frequency transit. They liked the transit that was serving the area. They also said make it more walkable. And so these were some of the highlights that we heard. And then I'm going to turn it over to Tom to talk more about some of the guiding principles.
Thank you. So, uh, what's really ex, uh, really, um, fantastic about this effort is that we've got this regional effort that has driven down focus into the city's medical district as becoming this emergent, emerging, uh, fantastic place for medical services, for education, a great place to live, a great place to work, a great place to learn. The vision that's being developed and the regional focus of this vision is directly in line with the conversation that Council just had at that last presentation and that's emerging, uh, with staff and Council for the medical district and which will serve us very well as we move forward with the other plans that Scott talked about. So when you step back and think about it for a second, all this effort that's been done with Southern Nevada Strong, leading to a point where we have this fantastic launching pad for the work that we're about to embark in over the next 12 months to develop these plans for the medical district, is really fantastic. And the opportunities that brings for funding, because we have this regional coordination, is really a, a great opportunity for us. So when we look at the, um, development concept that was developed, they, Southern Nevada Strong not only defined these opportunity districts, but they drilled down a little bit and started looking at what some of these opportunities are. Uh, they, they talk about things like all of the surface parking that Councilwoman mentioned in, during the last presentation, and the opportunities that present for some of this development, for mixed-use, uh, housing, retail, entertainment, maybe open space, things that would lend themselves to a healthy living, uh, environment in the medical district for students, for doctors, for, you know, patients and so on. They also looked at some of the, uh, the corridors for moving people around. I mean, when we think about the medical district, one of the, the challenges as well as opportunities is making it a convenient place, uh, very accessible by auto, by bike, by walking, by transit. And so looking at how some of these, um, the street networks are laid out in the medical district, the opportunity to take Shadow Lane and make it kind of a focus of the medical district through some street enhancements in a very pedestrian, active, um, corridor, the opportunities to use Alta and, um, Charleston to link up to Symphony Park and, and the downtown area. And then of course, you know, in the study, they did look at the opportunities that come with Symphony Park and, uh, some of the, the uses that are already there and some of the planned uses and how we link those up and create additional opportunities to expand and develop in the medical district. So some of those short-term actions that, that they talked about, secure commitments for expanded or new medically-oriented facilities, these are the things that are going to be discussed in the facilities master plan that, that Scott's working on. Demonstrating public commitment to the district through investments. This is some of the stuff that will come out of our downtown plan and our, our medical district plan. It'll provide that framework where we can invest with confidence, not only in public amenities, but that will help drive private investment as well. And then this idea of investing in facade improvements, district branding, it's about creating a place that when you enter, you know that you're in, in the medical district, that it's well-known throughout the, the community and, and is very, uh, much, has its own identity. Some of the longer-term, uh, actions, you know, talk about some of the transportation issues, these take, you know, uh, more time to develop these investments, revitalizing the Charleston Corridor. We've got a lot of, uh, planning efforts in that area. And then the, the, there's a phasing plan in here, really talks about the core medical district as it is, is phase, phases one and two. This is where we focus our immediate efforts. And then longer-term and into the Symphony Park and, and north of Alta. And so we have a very, very brief video, it's like 30 seconds, that, that it's kind of an interesting, um, visualization of how the medical district might, uh, develop. It's at the corner of Shadow and Charleston. And so if we can show that video, please. So you can see the streetscape, uh, improvements and then some, uh, potential development opportunities, uh, more streetscape enhancements that improve walkability and, and cycling. I did have to have a picture of me cycling through there, but they didn't get that in So with, with, you know, with just a little bit of effort, you can see the kind of improvements and how that would begin to change the nature and the, and the, and the feeling of the district and then, and how it functions and, uh, how it becomes this, uh, great place to, again, to live, to work, to learn, to receive medical care, to provide medical care. And, uh, so the vision that's laid out in the Southern Nevada Strong, um, document, I think, is a, is an excellent launching pad for all the work that we're about to, uh, embark on in the city. And, and with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for the report. I, I guess what's interesting is you're from the City of Henderson, right?
Yes.
So you're, uh, you're from the City of Henderson, talking about a project in the middle of Las Vegas. So this isn't just a, something for the benefit of Las Vegas, this is a, a regional, this is for Southern Nevada. So that's, uh, that's good to hear.
Yes, it, we're, the regional plan, Southern Nevada Strong is a regional plan that recognizes that we lead regional lives. And we, in order to be competitive with other communities across the country, we really need to take a look at some of those things on a regional basis, still respecting all of our individual autonomy.
Sure.
But we do need to call out what those priorities are for us so that we can be more competitive, bring resources back to our community.
That's great. Any comments, a little Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I just would like to comment that I was very impressed with the workshops you had. And, uh, I know the first one, I thought, oh no, do I need to go to another? And I went and you had me hooked and all the others were very, very good also. A hard work, the diligence that you showed in something, as he has just mentioned, for the whole community. It's just been a, a wonderful thing for me to see.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman, can I have a motion to accept the report?
Move to accept the report.
Actually, Councilwoman, we can't have a motion on this real agenda for it.
Uh, it says here, is there a motion to?
My bad. All the others were not agenda, this one was.
Okay.
My apologies.
All right, go ahead.
I move to accept the report.
Thank you.
With respect.
Thanks for the report. Thanks for coming down. Good job.
Thank you.
And post, please. Uh, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we are now into, uh, bills. So, uh, item number 43, recommending committee bills eligible for adoption at this meeting, uh, bill number 2014 dash 71. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor Porten.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Porten. Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2014 dash 71, in ordinance of the City, City Council, City of Las Vegas, Nevada, providing for the issuance of its general obligation, limited tax sewer bonds, additionally secured by pledge revenues, Series 2014A, for the purpose of financing sewer projects and refunding certain of the city's outstanding sewer bonds, providing the form and terms and conditions thereof, and providing for their sale, providing for the levying collection of annual general adware and taxes for the payment of the bonds, additionally securing their payment by the pledge of revenues derived from the city's sewer system, providing for other details in connection therewith, and providing the effective date thereof.
Uh, move, move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item number, uh, 44, bill number 2014 dash 72. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor Porten.
Thank you, Mayor Porten. Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2014 dash 72, in ordinance of the City of Council, City of Las Vegas, Nevada, authorizing the issuance of its City of Las Vegas, Nevada, general obligation, limited tax, parking, refunding bonds, additionally secured by pledge revenues, Series 2014B, tax exempt, and the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, general obligation, limited tax, parking, refunding bonds, additionally secured by pledge revenues, Series 2014C, taxable, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds, providing for the form, terms, conditions of the bonds, and for the security therefore and the deal's connection therewith, providing for other matters relating thereto, and providing the effective date hereof.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. And post. Motion carries unanimously. Mayor, we're on item 45.
Go ahead and finish that last one.
Okay, we are, uh, item number 45, bill number 2014, uh, dash 73. This bill was read at the special city council meeting on October 29th and it was not referred to a recommending committee, is eligible for adoption today. I'd like the bill read, please.
Thank you, Mayor Porten. Bill number 2014 dash 73, in ordinance to amend the downtown centennial plan to authorize medical marijuana dispensary uses within the Arts District by means of special use permit and provide for other related matters.
Thank you, um, and I'd like to ask you a question. Um, since this bill was introduced at the last meeting, um, medical marijuana, as I recall, for reading only, um, and, uh, the essence of what it says, how about all those applicants before who had made inquiry, could they in fact apply, um, for a medical dispensary in the Arts District? And we're told no, that was out of, out of limits. Now, do we reopen it up based on this to everybody who wanted to go ahead and apply in there?
Let me take a stab at answering the question. I believe that the answer is no, that right now our ordinance says that you submit an application, you are not allowed to amend it. And so unless you amend your ordinance, uh, the applications that are in right now are for the areas that have been applied for and not for this district.
Therefore, though, this is not fair, in my opinion, because late, later people can now apply and go into where other applicants who were told, no, you can't go in there, it's off limits. It doesn't seem equitable to me.
But, I won't speak to the equities of it, but I will say that it would apply to future applicants if they were future locations, and it would apply to anybody who has a current application that wished to move in the future if that were reopened. But, for what's currently been submitted, they cannot be amended to apply for the Arts District if this passes today.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Is someone needed to speak in behalf of the bill? I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to ask a question. Is this coming, have the people who own the businesses in the Arts District, is this something they want?
Thank you, Councilwoman, through you, Mayor, through you, to Councilwoman Tarkanian. Yes, the Board of Directors of 18B has voted 10 to 1 to request that the plan change. You know, the plans down there, the overlays are very awkward, and I did not know this until I came into office, that for any use, you have to have a text amendment to change or add a use, even if it's a sensible use that's consonant with an Arts District. So, for example, because health clubs are not listed under the 18B permitted uses, you'd have to have a text amendment to put a health club in there. So, you know, I'll be visiting with them on that.
So, the people who live and work in the Arts District have a board which represents them?
Yes.
And that board has come to you and asked that this ordinance be placed there?
That is right, Councilwoman.
And have, what about, do they understand that there were people who may, to my understanding, believe me, I wasn't involved in that piece, but who, it was my understanding, there were people prior and making applications that were told that was off limits?
Your Honor, that's why I brought the amendment, because they did want it, and maybe in the future, they can have it. There are ways it could happen later on down the line, I'm not sure how that works, that's a legal thing, but it's not contemplated, you know, by me, that someone is going to suddenly move in there. You know, I just don't know how it works. I just don't, I know it won't affect anybody who already has been approved by the city, that much is clear.
Do we have any approved applicants that are in the Arts District, or that have gone through part of the process yet? Sorry. And this is a public hearing, which I will declare open at some point.
For the record, Mayor Tom Perigo, acting planning director, there are no applications currently for medical marijuana establishments in the Arts District. There was one submitted during the normal process, when it was open, that per the ordinance, it was required that we denied them at the beginning for not being in compliance, for being in the Arts District, of course, not allowed.
Okay, in furtherance of that, we have now received back a total of 10 by the state of the potential 12 that we can have for dispensaries, is that correct?
Your Honor, if I might, Karen Duddleston, for the Record Business Licensing Manager, we, the state ranked and issued provisional certificates to 12 medical marijuana dispensaries, 10 of which were given compliance permits and land use by the city council. So, we have 10 that are proceeding at this time.
And for the other two that have been given permission, there are two more open applications. Is it, in fact, they'll just move on our list, or new applicants under this new recommending committee bill, adopting at this time, could those people then change, they're not allowed to change what's already in application?
With the City of Las Vegas, they are not allowed to amend their application under the state provisional certificate. That's, the first question has to be asked by the state, and we're asking them, within the next few days, we're working with our city attorney's office on a letter, to request some clarification. They have given us, in some verbal conversations, how their certificates are going to work, but we need to get that in writing and move through this. We do not know, one of those applicants of those 12 withdrew their application prior to the city council hearing it. So, how the state is going to handle that situation, if they will give us the next one on the list or not, we do not know. So, we need to get some written clarification from the state before we can fully answer the questions on what happens to those two open dispensary locations.
What I'm trying to get at is find out, all, everybody that's submitted, that's on the list already, and that's been approved by council, is already in. So, this would have to go to the future, if, in fact, somebody closes, and a new application, which would make it more level. My concern is that this wasn't a level playing field by passing this, even if the Arts District has passed a vote and said yes, we will go ahead and entertain having a dispensary. Because somebody was turned down already.
Right, the only way, we would have to open applications and accept new applications.
New applications.
Is the only way that somebody could come in and apply for the Arts District if this is approved.
Okay, thank you, that helps me.
And I believe the same thing would have to happen at the state. The state would have to open, because they have ranked their list, 1 through 55, I believe, at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilman?
I was just going to say that the, it's tricky, the law is written in such a way that it's really, in theory only, Your Honor, that if somebody's denied a land use again, you know, they were denied once, and maybe they are denied again. If that happens, they can move within five miles of any, you know, anywhere they can find a location which is properly zoned. And I think that's to prevent the deliberate, how should I say, the deliberate turning down of somebody as an individual, as opposed to their conflicts, as opposed to their qualifications. And, in other words, it gives them a chance to move where something would be welcome. And it would take away the onus of a council or a commission deliberately not licensing someone, because they didn't like the color of their skin or the color of their clothing. It's that simple, I think, and that's somewhere in the statute, but I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know what will happen after all this happens, so there will be lawsuits.
Okay, well.
I move for approval.
I think we're going to have lots of lawsuits, I'm afraid, Councilman, but if we vote for this, we vote for approval of it, and it's there when and ever or whatever, legal or time-wise it occurs, is that right?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to, before you make your motion, this is a public hearing, which I sort of slipped in there. So, let's hear from the public, anybody who wants to be heard on this issue. Would you please come forward and state your name? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, it's opportune, Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor, I move for approval of item 48, excuse me, item 45.
And please post. It passes, thank you very much. And we'll move on to agenda item number 46. Items 46 through 48, bills number 2014-68, 2014-69, 2014-70, will be heard at a later meeting. We'll move on to planning items. Don't go too far, Mr. Perigo. Okay, agenda items 49 and 50 are consented, agenda are considered to be routine and are recommended for approval by the Department of Planning. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items 49 and 50?
Move for approval.
Thank you, this motion, please post, please vote, please post. And that motion carries, thank you. And we'll move on to agenda item 51, EOT, 56155, public hearing, applicant Marlar Char, Inc., owner, Three Play LLC, for possible action on a request for an extension of time for a non-conforming use tavern at 1875 South Decatur Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial Zone, Ward 1, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Tarkanian and staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, anyone who wishes to be heard on this item, is our applicant or representative present? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Your name, please, sir.
My name is Roy Garrett, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Do you want to make any comments on behalf of this?
Yes, ma'am. We closed the triple play that had been a business in the city for about 28 years in December of last year. It was closed in anticipation of obtaining a construction permit to reopen it with new partnership under the same 50% owner as its present owner. However, we, our construction company encountered delays getting a construction permit, however, it is going full steam ahead now, and we anticipate reopening in the first quarter of next year, which would put us slightly over the one-year anniversary that's required to reopen. Seeing that that may happen last month, we did approach the city, and they said there was precedent for requesting this extension. The owners of Skinny Dugans and West Charleston a few years ago had encountered exactly the same problem with exactly the same type of license, and we filled out the same paperwork that they did seeking this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, anyone wishing to make comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll close that and turn this over, Councilwoman, to you.
I agree with staff's recommendation and move for approval.
Thank you very much, this motion.
Your Honor, we have an amended condition.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
There you are.
Tom Perigo, acting director, I'm going to let Mr. Lowenstein read that into the record, please.
Thank you, please read it.
Through you, Madam Mayor, staff will like to revise condition number one to, as submitted to the clerk, to reflect a date stamp of June 21st, 2015.
Okay. That's agreed, too, by you?
Can I change my motion? It's just very simple, I agree with the motion with all conditions.
Do I understand that we have until June to reopen, is that what you said?
Basically, the, you submitted additional information that had a different date stamp, so it just needs to reflect the latest information you gave to us in the record for the condition.
Thank you.
Okay. So, there's a motion, please vote, and then, please post. And the motion carries, thank you very much, thanks for coming down.
Your Honor.
Agenda, yes, sir.
Could I be marked in favor of items 49 and 50? Thank you.
Agenda item 52, ROC 56171, public hearing, applicant owner Johnny Pappas, for possible action, a request for review of condition of an approved required review, RQR 53934, of a previously approved variance, variance 41321, to amend condition A, which states, the applicant shall complete the garage structure within 60 days, failure to complete this structure shall result in the revocation of VAR 41321, 1.48 acres at 1125 Cashman Drive, RE, Residence Estate Zones, Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. The staff recommends denial. This is a public hearing, which I declare it's open. Is the applicant or representative present? Okay, first, I'm going to ask staff, why the denial, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Relative to the review of condition application, the project was originally approved back in September of 2011. Subsequently, the application was submitted, was subject to two required reviews in 2013 and 2014. The latter required review had a condition placed upon it at council requiring the accessory structure to be completed within 60 days, or the variance would be revoked. As the subject site is not in compliance with the previously approved conditions of approval, staff is recommending denial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, if the applicant or representative, please announce yourselves, and then, proceed.
I'm Johnny Pappas, 1125 Cashman, and?
Nanette Ellis, on behalf of Johnny Pappas.
Okay.
We met up here, and you gave us 60 days to complete. We met, I met with Mr. Fag, like, the day after, I was able to get a meeting with him, because we needed to have it aesthetically, to meet with the home itself, and he said to get it all wood paneling, and the wood paneling, we finally couldn't get it fire-rated for the one wall, so we met with Mrs. Tarkanian. She told us what would be acceptable, as far as the outside, the side being stucco for the firewall, and the front being brick, and with the overhead door. And we've done this. I've met with the building department a couple of times. I don't understand why they've changed how I can do the firewall. Mr. Clark, I think it's Rod Clark, said that, because I came up with an alternative method, and it was a stronger gauge, and he said that I would have to have, show him that this, the gauge is stamped 15 gauge on the stud, which is not heard of. I can provide a materials that prove where it comes from, allied steel, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, so, I spoke to, because he had given me a name of a man to talk to, a fire consultant that does the stamping, and this gentleman wanted me to go on the block wall, go 10 feet up, hire a structural engineer, hire a surveyor, get 60 guys to put this up, and this is not within what Mrs. Tarkanian wanted to do. So, I've now since talked to another fire consultant firm, and they don't see why I can't use the WP 2007, which is in the fire book, the 3 and 5 eights, that I don't understand why Rod, when I was in the meeting with him, didn't suggest that to me. I mean, he could have saved a lot of time and told me that I could do that. If he wants this fire stamp, I can get it fire stamped, or it's going to take me, you know, the time for him, the fire consultant firm to put their little thing together and say that it's, but it's within the fire book. So, we're asking for time to get this, because we were stopped, we couldn't go any farther, because we were past the 60 days. So, we've been in limbo, and I don't know how to proceed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Before I spent $1,500, I want to know, you know, are we moving forward?
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go to the public, anyone who wishes to be heard on this item, please come forward. I'll close the public hearing then, and Councilwoman.
You know, as far as how it looked on the outside, I went over with you, and that was fine, but I don't control what has to be met by regulations through Public Works, through planning, through fire.
Understood.
And those are the ones, and I know you've worked very, very hard on this, I know you have, but you know, we've been on this for over three years.
I just jumped in at the last meeting, so.
I know you did, I know you did. And you know, when you asked for an extension after the 60 days, the 60 days, it was supposed to be torn down. I worked hard to get the extension for you, and worked with those entities, so that we could have that done, but it's still not done.
Well, we can't, we couldn't get a permit, we have everything on the permit, except for your approval.
It's not my approval, though, it's the approval of whomever it is, on a safety basis. Public Works is safety, Fire is safety. And is Public Works here, anybody, yes?
I think it's Building and Safety.
Well, let's have the representative speak.
Vicky Ozina, Code Enforcement, Building and Safety Department. The problem has been, they did submit their application on the 18th of September, it was architecturally denied because of the firewall issues. I checked with Rod Clark this morning before coming down here, and he advised me that they haven't had, they had had a meeting, and they had requested a resubmital of information, because there were some questions, but they haven't gotten anything submitted back to them for review. So, that's waiting on?
They're waiting on the applicant?
Correct.
And do they, how long have been, they've been waiting on the applicant?
It was denied on September 18th, but he didn't advise me what date that he had the meeting with them on, so I think it was a couple of weeks after that. So, it's been in limbo since sometime around the beginning.
It was the end of September.
So, we had?
And I, and I?
But, we had the whole month of October for you to?
And I have got it resolved, but before I spend $1,500 on a stamp, if you deny, or if we're denied going forward, and it has to be torn down, that's $1,500 that doesn't need to be spent, you know?
But, right from the beginning, I said you have to have the approval of the appropriate agencies. I said that right from the beginning, and you knew I was trying to help you, so you could get approval, so you wouldn't expect that I'm going to deny it, if we have that approval, but we never got that.
Well, here's, here's an example. When Johnny first applied for his, his permit, the fir, and it stamped 204, permit number 204265, Rod handed Johnny, he handed Johnny, this is how you do the firewall, okay? He started and marked it for Johnny, for Mr. Pappas, okay? We went back and submitted for another permit. He says, no, this doesn't work. Now, he's the one that says it does work, now he's saying it doesn't work. So, I came up with a stronger, a stronger gauge, you know, and he's saying that if it doesn't doesn't, if it's not, what he said to me is, if it's not stamped fifteen gauge on the stud, then you have to get a fire stamp. And I just thought that was just, you can get all the specifications on this, on the studs. I was using a tube, something stronger than the three-and-five-eights is twenty gauge. The tube was fifteen gauge. The lower the gauge, the stronger the material. And what I'm saying is that.
Go ahead, I, go ahead, but I just want to tell you, I've worked three years. I've spent a lot of time, I've gone out there personally with my own staff, more than, well, several times, and I, I must go on the information given to me by the specialists. And the information, as I'm understanding, is that it's not approved. So because it's not approved, after three years of half-built and half-not-built in that area, I'm, I have to move for denial. I gave the sixty days, I gave it longer than sixty days. I tried very hard. I will look into the fact of what happened here, and I'll try and see.
Yeah, because I had on the plan.
But I can't go any longer because we, he's had, okay, I move, excuse me. I have to move for denial, so that's what I do.
Okay, before you say that, I had on the plan stamped from a book, WP two thousand seven, I mean, eight thousand seven. He could have told me, yes, you can use this, but change your design. He did not do that.
It's, Ms. Tarkanian, it's, it's almost, that's why I got out of this and turned it over to Nanette. Every time you turn around, they change the rules on you, is what's happened here. And I got so disgusted with it, I just walked away from it, turned it over to Nanette, which she's more familiar with.
Because we're on the same code, and they're changing how to do, and we're only talking about thirty-six.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't know what and if there's any recourse for application or reapplying later after so many months, years.
At this point, if the variance is denied, the, then there'll be another hearing for you to formally revoke the variance itself, and then that's it. They have to tear the structure down.
Every time I've checked back with them, though, they, every time I've checked back when you've talked with me, they've given me information that I've understood. You did not come to me and tell me this part of it, so I've had no time to do that this time, and I have worked very hard to give you the time, so I have to stay with my move to deny.
Okay. At this point, there's a motion. Please vote on it, and please post. Counselor, there you go. And the motion carries for denial. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. On agenda item forty-nine and fifty, if you would take a look back, did you have recorded Councilman Barlow's affirmative on those, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Barlow voted the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will now move on to agenda item fifty-three. You're just a multitasker, Councilman. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from city planning commission meetings and dangerous business nuisance letter abatements, please. Thank you. Move on to agenda item fifty-four. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time. Any single speakers allowed may be limited. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item fifty-five. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Is there any member of the council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? Let's go to the right Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. We started something new in Ward Two. The Ward Two Walkers. This is a informal walking group that does a couple of laps around the eight-tenths-of-a-mile paved walking path at the Walupi Canyon Trailhead. This is located in Ward Two on Walupi, just north of Alta, between Alta and the hospital. We're doing it every Monday and Thursday mornings at eight o'clock. You certainly don't have to take two laps. You can take one lap or three laps if you'd like, but it is a beautiful park, full of desert landscaping and rabbits, and Marshall Paquene was out patrolling and standing next to his car a couple of mornings ago. We noted a peregrine falcon attempting to take a rabbit for a meal. It was very Disney-esque, I would have to say. Any rate, please join us. This is being sponsored by Trudy Temple as well, who is the Ward Two appointee to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, and I will be out there Monday certainly, and as often as I can manage it. We're going to be doing Coffee with the Councilmen Friday, November fourteenth, seven-thirty to nine o'clock at the Bagel Cafe. That is just off the Sermelin Parkway on Buffalo, and love to see constituents out there.
How about your fellow councilpersons? That's delicious.
They are absolutely invited.
Yummy.
And it's a, I was actually thinking the other day, I think this might be the oldest restaurant in Ward Two, because they were, they were early, early pioneers out on the west edge of town, and now the west edge of town is quite a bit further west. At any rate, if that's not your style, we're going to be doing Beers with Beers at John Cutter's Saloon and Grill on November twentieth. It's a Thursday from five-thirty to seven-thirty. That's on the outside of the Beltway, west of the two-fifteen, right off of Charleston and Desert Foothills Drive. And also, on November fifteenth, everyone's invited to raise a little money for Easter Seals. It's the Easter Seals Nevada Cheers to Chocolate event at Tivoli Village, where guests can go from table to table and taste a variety of wines and enjoy chocolate as well. Live music there, silent auction. It's forty-five dollars if you pay at the door. You can save five bucks by getting your ticket ahead of time online at cheers to chocolate dot com. Finally, on this day in music history, the Wizard of Oz in Concert was performed at Lincoln Center as a fundraiser for the Children's Defense Fund. This was in nineteen ninety-five. That's Jackson Brown, believe it or not, who was the Scarecrow. Roger Daltrey played the Tin Man. Natalie Cole was Glinda. It was quite the, quite the rockin' show. Deborah Winger starred as the Wicked Witch. And that's all we have for Ward Two, Your Honor.
Thank you. Sounds like food. Thank heavens you're walking, so you're knocking off the weight you're gaining. Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind everyone that Monday, November tenth, City Hall will be open for business. However, on Tuesday, November eleventh, City Hall will be closed in honor of Veterans Day. Please come down for the Veterans Day Parade. On November eleventh, Tuesday, it begins at ten AM. It begins at Gas and Fourth, then travels north on Fourth Street up to Stewart. It is the second-largest Veterans Day Parade in the country and the largest west of the Mississippi, so proud that Las Vegas does a great job honoring our military veterans. So come on down and have fun with the parade.
Thank you. And Councilwoman.
We will be having a Senior Harvest Festival at Sartini, Sartini Senior Plaza, nine-hundred Brush Street, at eleven AM Wednesday, November twelfth, and it will last for two, three hours. We have already invited six hundred-plus seniors. We will have twenty-plus vendors, six presenters, raffle prizes, light refreshments. Our topics will cover health, safety, legal issues, transportation, and similar situations for seniors. If you have seniors at other places in other wards that might want to attend, please let us know, and we'll see if the transportation we're providing can help pick them up also. And then we're going to have a meeting on Bob Baskin Park. It's a rehabilitation meeting, a rehab meeting, on how we're going to fix up that park, because that's also one of our older parks in Las Vegas. Well, the meeting will be held at Wasden Elementary School, which is two-eight-three-one Palomino Lane, and it starts at six PM on Tuesday, November eighteenth, and we want all our citizens to come out and join this new way that we're doing things pertaining to parks, getting as much resident input as possible. So please come, give us your thoughts, and believe me, they will be heard, and we're very excited that we'll be having a rehabilitation of Bob Baskin Park. And lastly, I hope, laying this on what Councilman Starvis has already said, it's Veterans Day, and for those of you who are younger, you may not have felt the full impact of World War II, or the full impact of having a father away from your home. It isn't just the people who are fighting. I had a dad who fought in World War II and following wars, and he was on submarines. If you ever went in one of the submarines that they had at that time, you'd see how little the space was and what those gentlemen had to put up with. And my dad was in Japanese harbor with depth charges being dropped at the Japanese, by the Japanese every time they moved, because they got caught in one of those big fishing nets, and the buoys kept moving every time they moved, so they had a very difficult time. And my dad's just one story out of thousands and thousands of people who served, so I hope you come out to the Veterans Parade, and mostly, I hope that respect is shown to our veterans today. I go to hospitals sometimes, and I see how roughly they're treated, and I've been other places and seen the lack of respect they've shown, and all I want to do is say to the people who weren't around at the time we had that big war, to know that these men deserve the big, most respect we can possibly give, and thank you for giving me those extra seconds.
Absolutely, and so what, well said. Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor, and wonderful words, Councilwoman Tarkanian. I, too, would like to say Happy Veterans Day to all of the veterans, and in particular, my father who fought in Vietnam, Mr. Nathaniel Barlow, Jr., and to my oldest brother, Jeff Barlow, Sr., who fought in Desert Storm, Desert Shield. And so for that, to all of the men and women in uniform currently and in the past, I would like to say thank you so very much for your selfless, selfless act of, of give back to make sure that the foundation that we stand on remains free, and for that, I am grateful. Coffee with the Councilmen, ladies and gentlemen, is canceled on November sixth due to the annual Teen Town Hall, which is taking place on tomorrow here at City Hall. So Coffee with the Councilmen is canceled, and we will reconvene on December fourth, Thursday, December fourth. First Friday Celebration taking place actually in Ward Three, and so Councilman Beers asked that I share this information to invite everyone to please come out and participate, and this will be taking place, I'm sorry, Councilman Coffin, not Councilman Beers, because Councilman Beers will be at Beers with Beers. While we're downtown enjoying First Friday Celebration with Councilman Coffin, November seventh, from five PM until eleven PM. So please visit FFLV.net for more information in regards to First Friday. The Ward Five Fishing Derby is taking place this Saturday out at Lorenzi Park, so we are teaching young people how to fish, not just giving them a fish. So if you have a school-aged youngster and would like to come out and participate in the annual Ward Five Fishing Derby, where lots of prizes will be given away, to include light refreshments in the morning and brown bag lunch in the afternoon, and possibly you or your child may have an opportunity to take home a wonderful trophy along with a fish. We have overstocked the pond out at Lorenzi, and we're looking forward to another successful year of young people coming out, learning how to fish. And so I want to thank the Fish and Wildlife for a wonderful job that they do, bringing out equipment, and also to my entire staff, to include Harry Williams, for coordinating this effort for the young people throughout Ward Five. On November ninth, Allegato World Jazz Quartet Concert. This is a free concert open to the public at Sammy Davis Junior Festival inside of Lorenzi Park. This festival will be taking place, so please call my office for more information at two-two-nine five four four three, or go on my website for additional information at LasVegasNevada.gov forward slash Ward Five for additional information in regards to Allegato World Jazz Quartet Concert. The Dulittle Senior Center, they're producing a show called I've Got Talent Showcase, and this will take place at the West Las Vegas Library Theater at nine fifty-one West Lake Me Boulevard. You may call the Dulittle Senior Center at two-two-nine six one two five for more information if, in fact, you would like to participate on November twentieth. December seventh, the Bluegrass in the Park, the next Bluegrass concert will take place on Sunday, November second. Come out and enjoy the music of local bluegrass bands playing traditional American music with banjos, fiddles, guitars, and mandolins. This is a free event for the entire family to enjoy, so please come on out and continue to support the Bluegrass in the Park the first Sunday of every month. And of course, the Ward Five social media. You may stay informed with events and matters happening in Ward Five and with your councilmen by following me on Twitter and Facebook. If you would like to receive the Ward Five e-newsletter, please visit my website once again at www.lasvegasnevada.gov forward slash Ward Five, or send me your email address, and I would love to include you in on the e-newsletter. Once again, Happy Veterans Day to all of the veterans, and thank you, Mayors, for running a very tight ship today.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ross, as you know who wasn't able to attend today, asked me to share with you that he will host the Ward Six Document Treading Event on Saturday, November fifteenth, from ten AM to noon at six-six-zero-one North Buffalo, six-six-zero-one North Buffalo, at the Centennial Hills East Parking Lot. So bring your old documents and papers, and to quote him exactly, for a ripping good time. I echo the thoughts and comments from my peers here, wishing all of our servicemen today and all of our veterans a Happy Veterans Day, and for those who sacrificed so much, which was the ultimate sacrifice, to give us the freedoms that we enjoyed yesterday by voting and being able to live in this wonderful country that we call home. Our next council meeting will be held Wednesday, November nineteenth, and that will be held here, of course, at City Council, beginning at nine. And staff, thank you very much, and all those that keep us up and running so efficiently and hanging in all day. Thank you, our city clerk, and your staff, and Betsy always, and support staff. What would we do without you? You keep us all honest. Thank you, and until next time, the meeting is adjourned.